Good evening and welcome to the September 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Akron Public School Board. Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molinar.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
I'm here.
And Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
We are seven present, zero absent.
Thank you, and please stand for the pledge of allegiance if you're able. Vice President Jackson, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So first up on our agenda, under communications, we do have a grant that we are blessed to be receiving from the Akron Community Foundation, David R. and Cheryl L. Vernarge Fund. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry. Board members, tonight, we wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge one of our donors who have been generous to our school district, Mr. and Mrs. Vernarge. Are they present today? Thank you. Can we all give them a round of applause, please? Thank you. Thank you so much. Ms. Vernarge and her family have been serving the needs, Mr. and Mrs. Vernarge, I'm sorry, and their family have been serving the needs of APS families since the pandemic. And every year, the number of families they have helped increases. If you do one little thing, it can grow and multiply, says Mrs. Vernarge. Anything that has to do with food and helping people struggling to get the basic needs in life, I'm there. Mr. and Mrs. Vernarge, the owners of APV Engineered Coatings, formerly Akron Paint and Varnish Company, started a grant program through the Akron Community Foundation to teach their children a lesson in philanthropy. "We wanted the family to learn the community's needs and how important it is to give back to the community," said Mrs. Vernarge. She and her husband grew up in Akron and are graduates of Akron Public Schools. Mrs. Vernarge graduated from Firestone and Mr. Vernarge graduated from Garfield. When the family reviewed applications for grant requests, they were moved by the five APS schools that asked for financial assistance for families needing food, emergency clothing, t-shirts, socks, underwear, and miscellaneous items such as detergent, bus passes, and personal hygiene items. The family concluded that it could not choose one school over the other and decided to fund all five schools that requested. Yes, thank you. We're now up to 14 schools and hope to grow that number yearly. The grandchildren are more involved now. I have six granddaughters, they have six granddaughters, ages 12 to 22, two sons and two daughters, said Mr. Vernarge. "The APS family liaisons are the real warriors." Yes. These women go out and find what the families need. We couldn't accomplish anything without their help. Peggy Grenier, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, who helped write the initial grant request five years ago, agreed that the family liaisons did their homework to find what the families needed. They wrote the grant, "I helped them craft the message to the donor," she said. But I do recall vividly that the Vernarge family was very engaged in the process, from the parents to the grandchildren. The initial grant was for $10,000. Five schools received $2,000 each. Dr. May Walker of APS Student Services, who oversees the program, now praised the 28 staff family liaisons. She said the school grants are $1,02,500, and the funding doesn't end. It replenishes and adds additional schools to the list. This year's list, pending board approval, includes, and this is something board members that you'll be approving at the appropriate time, schools receiving $2,500 would be KCLC. Are those parent liaisons and principals perhaps here? Could you stand when I call your school name? Thank you. Let's give them a hand. David Hill. Glover. CLC. Leggett. Portage Path. Sam Salem. And schools receiving $1,000 is Barber CLC. Kraus CLC. Pfeiffer Elementary. Resnick CLC. Reimer CLC. Schumacher CLC. Cyberling. And Boris. Let's give all of those schools a hand. And let's give our Vernarge family once again, let's give them a standing ovation, please. Thank you. Mr. and Ms. Vernarge, if you would like to say, have words?
Thank you. Is it, it is on. Oh, you're in trouble now. I do have to say, if it wasn't for this wonderful group of people back here who do what they do, I don't think this ever would have happened. So, thank all of you. And I'll be visiting.
Madam President.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And to my colleagues, at this time, we have before you item 2.2, a resolution to approve the David R. and Cheryl L. Vernarge Fund of Akron Community Foundation for their generous gift of $23,000 for the schools that were just named. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Hall. Is there any discussion? Mr. Alexander.
I just want to make a comment. You know, several years ago, when I was in leadership of Akron, we went to paint and varnish. Dave's laughing because when I went there, I talked to him about different things that were going on in the city. He said, "What can we do to help Akron Public Schools?" And so we sat down and talked, and he's come through to give money for Akron Public Schools. It wasn't me, so I'm not taking the credit. I'm giving it to them because they believe in Akron Public Schools and our students, and I want to thank you both for giving us those funds. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
I just want to say thank you so much because I know it means so much to the families that you serve and also to our community liaisons. I tell, to Stancy, we have to definitely thank Stancy for the work she does and putting this all together. It's just really excellent because that's what it's about. Everything is about the children, and when we do things to make their lives easier, it's what you feed is what will grow. So, thank you so much because you show where your treasures are, where your heart is, and so your heart is with our community and with our children. So, I thank you, and I thank God for you and for our liaisons and those who are working to make their educational experience better. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or discussion? Again, many thanks to you for your generous gift, and thank you to the family liaisons who just continually showed their worth. So, thank you so much. And so, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Abstain.
Dr. Molinar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0 with one abstention.
Thank you very much. Thank you to my colleagues, and thank you again to the Vernarge family.
Let's give them another hand. And Ms. May, Dr. Dr. May, I'm sorry. And Ms. Sykes, she's in the back. Oftentimes, she's very quiet, but she is a storm, and she really does a lot. So, if we could give them both a hand, please. I would like to ask for the Summit County Children's. Are they here?
Mallory McConnell.
Shorts, I have to move this down a little bit. Hi, good evening. My name is Mallory McConnell, and I'm here tonight, if I can get this to work, on behalf of the Citizens Committee for Children's Services, and I'm here asking you to please consider voting for yes on issue 40 in November. As you may know, Summit County Children's Services is committed to the safety, permanency, and well-being of children served in partnership with their families and with our community. We are often the first responders to child abuse, neglect, and dependency. Our agency serves one of every 12 children in Summit County, last year serving 9,767 children. This levy provides 60% of our operating budget, so if this levy were to fail, it would significantly impact our personnel costs, the services, reducing us to the bare minimum state and federal mandates. However, passing this levy would mean we can continue to provide our high-quality service delivery for children and families. It's really important to note that this levy is capped. It is not a tax increase, but simply a renewal. So, to put into perspective, if you own a $100,000 home, this would only cost you about $68 per year. This $3.25 million levy renewal would take us from 2026 to 2031. Again, not a tax burden, simply a renewal. So, we are asking you to please vote yes on issue 40 on November 5th and help us to continue the valuable work that we do in this community for children and families. If the board would be inclined to endorse us, I do have the paperwork with me this evening I could leave for you to review. We also have some handouts with more information, some vote yes to issue 40 badges, and just more information for anybody interested. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell. And so, item 2.3 contains the resolution in support of the Summit County Children's Services levy renewal. Is there a motion?
I saw moved to approve.
It has been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Vice President Jackson. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to, I'm sorry.
Mr. Perry.
Ms. McConnell, I just wanted to say thank you, you know, for the work you guys do with us, Children's Services. I mean, hearing that number of kids that come through every year is alarming, but I know the work you do is good, and it helps them and the families and all that, and just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molinar.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Autry, sorry. I buried you off again.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 3.1, Board Member Reflections. Are there any Board Member Reflections? Mr. Alexander.
Yes, I just want to give a brief synopsis of, I was able to go to Washington, DC on September the 10th, and I was there with a number of people from about 24 other states that were there supporting to go to Capitol Hill to lobby for public education. And we had a good group of people, some good breakout sessions, and then we went to Capitol Hill, and we talked to our congressmen and women, and we also talked to some senators. And so, we were going to talk to our Congresswoman, Congresswoman Sykes, and we were going to talk to one of her staffers, and we began our talk and our discussion with her, a very bright young lady she had. She had everybody who was in her, worked in her office, was from Ohio, and it was nice to see the group of young people that were working in the office. But she started talking to us about public education, and probably about 10 minutes as we got into it, she walked into the office, and so she came in, we got a chance to meet with her, we got a chance to talk to her about our concerns with public education, and she knows those concerns as well. So, we were glad that we were able to get up there just to talk to her and some others and be with some of our other colleagues. There was a gentleman from Canton and another gentleman from Columbus who was with me, and so we got a chance to talk to her, and we know that she's a champion for public education. She's a graduate of Akron Public Schools, and she is really for us in education. So, she's someone that we want to make sure we keep in her office because we know that she will back us here at Akron Public Schools in public education. So, that's just want to give a brief shout out to her and to also say thank you for what she's doing for us here in our area for public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say, on the 10th, the LeBron James Family Foundation hosted a family feast with all of their children at I Promise School, as well as kids that came up through the foundation. And just being there and just sitting in the middle and just watching all these kids that came back who's currently in high school, how excited they were to come back and see their teachers. They were hugging their teachers. They were like, "I miss you," you know, and teachers checking up on them, and teachers knew them by name. So, it's not like you go away and you come back and you're like, "Yeah, I know you, wish you..." They actually said the kids' names. So, it was like a lot of hugs. It was real emotional and things like that, and I just felt so excited to be just a part of the event, seeing that, you know, that foundation really love our kids. And I know that they, you know, do the best that they can to work hard for our kids and to give them more than some families can give. So, I just want to say, you know, LeBron James Family Foundation, you're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any other community and school reflections? Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a long reflection. I will try to say it as fast as possible, but at our last board meeting, when I found out I was for the Bookto Cluster, I knew the first building I was going to have to visit was going to be Schumacher because my dad is a proud, proud alumni of Schumacher, and he said, "You're going to have to go there first because he was there K6." And I said, "Dad, it's a different building now. We rebuilt the building." And he said, "What do you mean it's different?" I said, "Well, it's a CLC now." And he asked the same question that I hear again and again when we go out into the community, especially now when I am at ward meetings, hearing people talk about the levy. What is a community learning center? And when I was at Schumacher, I feel like I really saw the embodiment of a community learning center. So, that's what I'm going to try and get in my last two minutes here. You pull into the driveway, the parking lot, and you see, I saw first, a sign about the National PTA Awards. So, this is the only PTA in Akron, one of seven in the whole state of Ohio that's part of the National PTA. And so, Principal Chris Haynes and Schumacher are the only national school of excellence for this in Summit County. So, we talk about excellence a lot of times in a lot of areas of our district, and Akron Early College, I know Principal O'Neill sent me an email about how for the fourth year, they have a five-star rating, 18th in the whole state, 941 school, or out of 941 schools. I hope someone else can really talk about that because I really want to focus on the excellence here at Schumacher now because what I saw and what I heard from the principals is that as instructional leaders, they were supporting the whole child in community learning centers through the PTA, the parents, the teachers, both in the PTA, not just one or the other, but both of them, and the strong family liaisons. And so, they had very successful literacy nights, math nights, and financial literacy nights for parents that some of the parents were even able, who attended this, were able to buy a car and a down payment on a house due to their time at the community learning center after school in those financial literacy classes. And so, the business community came in to teach classes at the CLC, supported by the PTA after school, and so I really, really wanted to highlight that. But I have 38 seconds, so I also want to talk about the learning. Diverse school, they have an ESL teacher with 30 students and a bunch of different languages, Spanish, Swahili, Arabic, Nepali, and then I don't know if it was Pashto or Patani. My notes were bad. I know they're very different languages, but my notes are bad, so I'm sorry. But for one teacher in this whole building, many languages. But for one teacher in this whole building, many languages, the music in the morning, the calming music in the morning while students are transitioning from breakfast to learning time. And it's not just the climate, but the climate led to double-digit test score growth through the explicit instruction. And when I was in the fifth grade classes, I saw learning, I saw learning objectives. That's what I see, right? As an educator, you see that. And their learning objective was to learn how to respectfully disagree. And I thought, they're learning important things, sorry, PBS silver of two years, applying for gold. And I wish we had better opportunities. I know this is an informational meeting, this is a business meeting, but as board members to really talk about and highlight and discuss the awesome learning and things we're seeing in these buildings and dig into that more in not just three minutes, but sorry, thank you. Awesome job, Schumacher.
Thank you, Dr. Molnar. Are there any other school or community reflections? Vice President Jackson?
Y'all the ones voted for the time I've been talking about with the schools, no way. So Bookto CLC, I was so happy. It's not my cluster anymore. I'm aware that Firestone is my cluster, so I'm looking forward to getting into Firestone. And on my schedule, Bookto's right up the street from my job, so it's like, it's easy for me to sprint there. Always a pleasure. Lola Brewer is always welcoming the front office. And another thing I like, Principal Beecher does a great job, just the feeling of the building, a sense of community, the cleanliness of the building. I always feel welcome and it's always a pleasure to walk around to see the students engaging with their teachers. Ms. Whitmore dealing with the students when you look at the DECA programs, and we talk about entrepreneurship and financial literacy. And so I was excited to see that. So I definitely want to give a shout out to Bookto High, since I want to make sure I'm not saying Bookto Middle, Bookto High, because it's a whole campus, and the great work that the teachers, the staff, the building leaders are doing. I'm excited about what's happening in that cluster that is now your cluster, that I'm so thankful that I got the opportunity to learn about because we all know I'm around. And so it was good to see and to glean into what's happening in Bookto Cluster. And just to piggyback very quickly off what you said, so Helen Arnold also, because of the family liaisons and the things going on there, offer financial literacy components, helps to, parents to look over their bills and connect them with different organizations through United Way and things like that that can help them pay for their bills. So our community partners are doing amazing things throughout our district, and our instructional leaders, the principals in those buildings and the teachers in those buildings, and the families in those buildings are really helping to drive that initiative with the whole child holistic approach. So I love when we keep it about the children. And so this has just been a very good feeling, and I'm just grateful to highlight it. I'm looking forward to getting to the Firestone Cluster. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any other school or community reflections? Mr. Perry?
Thank you, President Autry. So the last few days for me have been pretty emotional, very tough to make a decision that I had to make. I was offered a position with Judge Stormer's probate court as a part-time magistrate. And when I, when I thought about it, I had to make sure I could do it and still be on the school board. So the Ohio Rules of Professional Conduct say that a sitting lawyer who is a judge or magistrate cannot hold an elected position. He or she cannot be on the school board, it can't be on city council, they can't do any of that. And so I would have to step down from my position as a school board member to take this position, which I intend to do. I did call each one of you individually over the last few days and we spoke, and I appreciate your words of encouragement to me and what you said to me. And, you know, I just want to tell you right now, I value my time here in the last three years, learning each one of you and learning about our schools at APS and being able to visit these schools and to continue what we do. What we do is very important, obviously, very important. And I think each one of the seven of us knows that the students are our first priority. They always should be. And in saying that, you know, I know I've said so many times, my sons go to APS. I'm proud of that fact. You know, since they were in kindergarten, they've been in APS. I got a ninth grader now at Akron Early College, got a sixth grader at middle, STEM middle. They're going to keep going to APS. I'm proud of our schools. That will never change. I also am hoping that I can now be Joe from the, Citizen Joe from four four three one three, or I can do that now. And I can be more of an advocate because I can even be sitting here for that levy because I want that levy to go. Twenty-seven needs to happen, so I'm going to be an advocate for that as much as I can, and I'll be Citizen Joe from four four three one three for sure. I strongly wish I could do this and do that, but I can't. If I could, I would, but the rules say I can't do that. And I want to do what's right, and it's time for me to step down in my office as a board member now. It's very emotional, very sad for me, but I'll be around for sure, and I'll make sure I do my part to make our EPS schools still go strong. So thank you very much.
Just want to thank you, Mr. Perry, for your service and your time here, and congratulations on your opportunity.
Thank you.
And to my colleagues and to the community, I will talk a little bit more during the President's report on the process that we'll need to follow to replace this vacancy. And so are there any other community and school reflections? I just wanted to briefly share that since we last met, I had the opportunity, I was invited by Barber CLC to attend their family and climate meeting. So as you know, as you recall, Barber was as part of our restructuring, had an influx of some of the students from the north community. And so I think they have well over four hundred students now. And so they had a meeting in the middle of the day for the parents to come and just learn about the expectations. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Principal Renia Williams, who's doing an amazing job. She's just a little powerhouse over there. But to see that team in action as the families entered into the cafeteria and they were directed to the different sections of the cafeteria, if you speak Nepali over here, if you speak Arabic over here, if you speak Spanish over here, if you speak Farsi over here, and if you speak English, you sit anywhere. But to see the interpreters and how they engage and just the whole process, and I think those are just things that, I don't know if the greater community really thinks about, like, how hard that is and how challenging that is. And that was just for a family meeting. And so the cafeteria was completely filled, and then the students were able to see their families from the, what are those boards called? Promethean Board. So they got the wave. But it was just an amazing job to see that whole team in action doing their best to reach our students, setting the expectations. They had a Q and A period. And those families, in spite of the language barriers, they wanted to know, how do I get involved? What do I need to do to come and volunteer? So it's just amazing and it's awesome to see that these community members have value, see value in APS. So again, a shout out to Ms. Renia Williams and her staff over there who did a really, really great job with that meeting. Also, I was able to attend the Akron Council PTA meeting last week. It was a virtual meeting. And so we already touched upon the importance of PTA, and I just want to continue to encourage folks to get involved. You don't have to be a parent. You just have to care about children and education. So you can call any of our schools and find the status of their PTA when their next meeting is. But there is a regional training for anyone interested in getting a PTA started at their school on October the fifth, right here at Ten North Main. I think it's from nine to three. And that is a legitimate PTA expense, so I encourage anyone who's interested to come and learn how to be an advocate for their student and their school. And so that concludes my community reflections. Next on the agenda is our superintendent's report. Dr. Robinson. I'm sorry, before we do that, we do have some requests to address the board. And so the first person, as they make their way up, Carla Chapman, Citizen Committee. I will read the preamble here, and participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for follow-up. Thank you, Ms. Chapman.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Autry, Superintendent, members of the board. I am Carla Chapman. I am here as a representative of the Citizen Committee, Akron Public Schools. And I would like to request that our APS district provide our public, our staff, our voting-age students, and our families with good factual information on our district's website about the need for a school levy, the cost of issue twenty-seven, and the progress that we're making in our district, both academically, socially, emotionally, attendance-wise, because I think this is a good thing for us to do. There seems to be great momentum in our community about issue twenty-seven. Endorsements are growing, including those from major organizations in our community, and financial support is increasing. Having our district lead the way in educating both our internal and our external audiences about the levy, giving facts and information is a good thing because as educators and an educational institution, this is what we do. And so we want our citizens to be informed and engaged in this voting process. Some of our young people will be voting for the first time. We want them to have good information, good factual information. So I am requesting, as a member of the Citizen Committee, Akron Public Schools, that this information be made available on our website as soon as possible. Thank you.
Next, we have Pastor Harrison.
Good evening, Board. Want to address two subjects. Want to address the board as a whole, want to thank the board as a whole, and want to address the negative narrative that comes out against the Akron Public School Board. Three years ago, I absolutely would not have voted for a levy. The negative press, the negative narrative that comes from this board comes because you're asking questions. You're asking valid questions that have not been asked before. That causes tension with some people, but I think that that is necessary. I think that we have, I've been coming out to the board for ten years. I have been saying the same thing without any result, but you are asking the appropriate questions. So I think people who are looking at this from a negative aspect needs to look at this from a positive perspective, and it is because of the questions that you ask that I support the levy and would ask everyone to vote for the levy. My, the second topic is addressing the board. Oppressive policies only serve the oppressor and does nothing to liberate the oppressed. And when we have these oppressive policies, like you cannot speak on matters on vendors or you can't talk about personnel matters, well, there's no need for me to come down and address the board if I can't tell you why I want to address the board. The treasurer gave a, he respectfully disagreed with me, so I'll respectfully disagree with him as far as what the legislators' intent was when they had public information. I find it ironic when someone says I'm not an attorney, but then they go to give an illegal opinion. You, you, you can't interpret what the legislators meant. We can only interpret the law. And I think that's why we pay attorneys. And I was a little disappointed at the meeting Monday where the legal person was here, but we did not address that issue, what can and cannot be said at board meetings. This is a public body, and I would ask that you would get a clarification and that you would revise the reading prior to the public comment period because I think it is our time, this is our three minutes to speak. But I'll close again with the press and the negative narrative that APS is getting. I think that that should be looked at as a positive because this board is asking questions. You are reviewing contracts. You are allowing us to come and talk, and when we come and talk and when we ask questions at committee meetings, you are giving us financial reports. We don't have to agree with everything, but you are giving them to us. And I think that everyone should look at this and reevaluate their negative narrative and say, thank you, Board, for doing your job.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Next, we have Nicholas Garofalo.
Good evening, Board. I stand here in support of my son, Miles, a third grader at King CLC. As the board undoubtedly knows by now, the administration has performed what the superintendent calls the three-week shuffle due to low enrollment at King CLC. After a meeting with the superintendent and the chief of staff on Friday with a group of parents, grandparents, guardians, teachers, I address you now with deep resolve. Through this meeting, the superintendent tried to explain the rationale for this change, this removal of four student, correction, four classes at CLC. It's the contract. It's low enrollment. Enrollment has been trending down. It's normal. At least it's not October. The data was revealed of making the surgical decision to eliminate four classrooms at CLC and to take those children out and parse them up into the remaining classrooms. It was six students. Six students less than last year resulted in the removal, I'm sorry, of four classrooms of the eight permissible by contract. I'm still waiting for the enrollment data that was on August twenty-eighth, the day before the start of the academic year. I'm still waiting on the research-based evidence that suggests that this change is beneficial to the students or it doesn't negatively impact student learning. I believe this is a failure. A failure of the duty to serve the students of Akron Public Schools, a failure to choose to do the right thing, a failure to make adjustments prior to the start of school when it was appropriate, specifically those students in elementary school. In fact, the superintendent explained that during his time as an eleventh grader, that this happened to you as well. Now, can you imagine how this affects a third grader or a first grader or for what grandma, one grandma at King so eloquently described as a child with special gifts and talents? So I call on this board to reinstate those classrooms. I call on the board to support and serve all students by adding resources to provide an equitable learning environment. And I call on the board to ensure that no other Akron Public School elementary student has to suffer through this decisive administrative choice. I call on you to eliminate that three-week shuffle or replace it with a mechanism that does not negatively affect the learning of our children at Akron Public. Thank you. I yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Garofalo. Next, we will have Mr. Robert Lyons.
Good evening. September marks one year I've been coming to the board. I came down here to talk about something that I can't talk to you about tonight, which is van driving. But I learned a lot more. I learned a lot more about the board. I learned a lot more about administration. I've learned a lot more about the teachers, and I've learned a lot about the parents. I too am going to publicly come out and support the levy, even though I don't have the ten thousand dollars that the program asked for. I might have ten bucks though. I've got grandkids at Garfield. I got other kids in other charter schools. I have parents call me up by King, and I don't even drive there. I have friends that have friends that have parents that have students that go to King. I believe you have to have the money to operate the system. That's what brought me down here in the first place. Expensive money that was shelled out, lack of raises. And I do believe that as a vendor, but also as a voting member of this community, that I'm under duress by not being able to speak my mind. So I even thought about quitting so I could speak my mind. So, I even thought about quitting so I could speak my mind. It is oppressive. But then I had a student that's nonverbal. I'm driving for Helen Arnold. He couldn't tell me what was wrong. But I looked for a trigger to help him, and whistling calmed him down. Of course, I have Sirius Radio, Kids Bop definitely works. Appreciate, I appreciate the teachers, I appreciate the administration, but I have faith in the new blood on the school board. I believe the older guard has to pass knowledge and information to the new guard so that they can carry on the business of being a school board and making a difference in the schools. I believe the school board members need to do drop-bys at the schools because there's some things going on in the schools that need some attention, or at least looked at, or at least brought up. There was a Mason Institute at Garfield, the things that are going on at King, and some other stuff that parents see and are talking about. And I believe the parents want to support this levy. I don't think the state coming in to take over Akron Public is a good thing for nobody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Next, we have Clarissa Cornell.
I see you have on that South Ranger shirt too, Mr. Lyons. They had a good game this weekend.
I meant to say something.
Yeah, I see, I see.
Hello, good evening. My name's Clarissa. I am a proud Firestone Falcon. Go Falcons! I'm a member of the King PTA, which I do think is part of the National PTA, but I'll have to find out. But tonight, I'm here as a mom. My son is in first grade at King CLC. Last Tuesday, I found out that his teacher, who we had been so impressed by and who he had already grown attached to, would be transferred out of King before the end of the week. I also learned that a total of four teachers were to be transferred out of King. I have since learned that there's a maximum of eight total teachers who can be transferred through this process, meaning that one school with no notice was required to support at least 50% of the total transfers required through this process. While I have learned that these transfers are a common annual practice, I have confirmed that transferring this number of teachers out of one school building after the school year has begun is without precedent. Since learning of these changes, I have felt anger, sadness, disbelief, and general disappointment. While I've come around to be grateful for the time my son had with his exceptional teacher and for the incredibly competent and steady leadership at King CLC to guide us all through such a disruptive change, I've also deepened my resolve to call for improvement. And that's where my ask comes in. I'm here today to ask that you support parents' call for a review of the process and decisions that led to these abrupt and disruptive changes in pursuit of improvement of policies and practices involving teacher transfers, particularly when they happen after the school year has begun. And further, I'm asking that you work with APS leadership to identify additional evidence-based strategies, outside-of-the-box ideas, for addressing the very real personnel needs across the district in a way that minimizes classroom disruption. There is no doubt in my mind that everyone in this room is 100% committed to the growth and development of our kids. I too will be supporting the levy and doing everything that I can to advocate for everyone in Akron to vote for it. I'm also confident that everyone here is committed to the continuous improvement of APS. As I stated to district leadership when they graciously came to King this past Friday to meet with parents, "Thank you very much." I would be happy to volunteer my time to participate in a review of the transfer process. And I know other parents who would be more than willing to volunteer their time to lend their perspective on a process like this, to generate recommendations, at least to consider, to support equitable and efficient staffing with less classroom disruption. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cornell. Next, we have Courtney Brown. So, you're, okay, so he's rescinding his slot here. Thank you to all of those who have addressed us. Thank you so much. Next, we will move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Autry, Vice President Jackson, Board members, to our families, District. Wanted to acknowledge, wanted to acknowledge the award that was given to Project Rise with a $15,000 operating support for the 24-25 school year from GAR Foundation. And we're very grateful to GAR for the many countless things that they do for us as a district and for our scholars, and for the opportunities that they provide for our scholars. The Ohio STEM Network Innovation Network also awarded $60,000 to NIFSTEM High School at Robinson CLC for the Akron Hub Training Center to expand their professional development. Just a reminder, Board members, that we do have cornerstone meetings. We do encourage you to participate in those and to attend those. Dates have been sent. It is also on our website, so we do encourage our families to participate as well in those opportunities. Cornerstone I and State Culture of Safety and Belonging, and Cornerstone IV, Family Partners and Community Engagement, will be on Tuesday, September 24th at 3:30 PM and again at 5:00 PM in Room 207. Cornerstone II, Academic Achievement, will be on Wednesday, September 25th at 4:00 PM and again at 5:00 PM in Room 201. And Cornerstone III, Operational Excellence, will also be on Thursday, September 26th at 3:30 PM and again at 5:00 PM. And there's information, again, on the website. Had the opportunity to attend the Grill and Chill event with Aim High Gear Up. That's with Ms. Yvonne Culver. And it was a fabulous time. Snowballs, good food, good fellowship with our families, our community, and our scholars. Didn't have the chance to really get out and play kickball, but when I was getting ready to do that, it was over, so. But I really and truly enjoyed it. Held our Superintendent's Community and Advisory Committee. Those that attended, we got lots of good feedback, so we were able to take that information back to our, to our team, to share, and just to get the voice of our community and also our families. STEM Night at the Rubber Ducks Game was awesome. Also had the opportunity to go to Leggett, and they have participated with so many countless supporters. Boss Park is now been revived. It is, there is a bee and bird area that's going to grow over time. Will be able to definitely see our kids out enjoying some of nature right across the street from their school. And it was, it was really awesome to participate in that. STEM Night, I'm sorry, also attended the SEI, Their Success Is Our Success 2024 Meeting. Attended the Kiwanis Rise and Shine Event where the Kiwanis Club awarded, awarded Ms. Deborah Folk with the Dr. David James Excellent Educator Award for her decades of support, forward-thinking, problem-solving. So, this was something that was given and issued by the Kiwanis Club. Had a chance to go to Mason CLC for their Father Walk. When I tell you that they had a fabulous time there, I just left the doughnuts alone because they were, I didn't want to put a hurtin' on those. And also had a chance to go to I Promise School. I actually went there to check on the school and ended up engaging in their Father Walk as well. And it was really, 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 really nice. Had the opportunity to attend the Women in Northeast Ohio, right here in Akron. It's women entrepreneurs that were at Hardesty Park. Being new, I've passed the park multiple times, didn't know that, what was behind that shopping plaza, but very, very nice time. I'd never had pina colada, no alcohol, don't drink, but pina colada, lemonade, it was by Tea Time, and also Palms, Pound Cakes. I've caught it twice, and usually when I go, I always say, "No, no, no," and I end up buying more than I, eating more than I, I walk away with. And also had an opportunity to, to purchase a Sir Jono Truth painting there as well. And so, now for Be Kind 330. It is my pleasure to share another story about kindness. Our Be Kind 330 initiative continues to embody the spirit of generosity and unity in our schools and community. At its heart, this program is about showing kindness, whether it's to our students, our staff, our families who depend on our support. And the importance of that kindness cannot be overstated. Today, I want to take a moment to express our gratitude to the Women's Group at Oak Hill Presbyterian Church. I think you can see it on the screen. Over the years, they have been a steadfast supporter of our Project Rise homeless students and families. Oak Hill Presbyterian has held multiple collections of winter gear and other supplies, and those donations have been invaluable. These contributions go a long way in helping our students stay warm, safe, and ready to learn, especially during the colder months. We are so fortunate to have such caring and compassionate supporters. And to the Oak Hill Presbyterian Church, and especially the Women's Group, thank you for your ongoing support. Your contributions make a difference, not just in material terms, but in a way they show our families that their community, our community cares about them. Thank you so much. This concludes my report. Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Any questions for, regarding the Superintendent's Report? Thank you, Deborah Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I would just say to you, Mr. Superintendent, thank you, appreciate all that you do. I would kind of like to have a quick summary of the process that some of our parents talked about tonight. I assume that this process is one that's taking place throughout the school system after a certain number of days, that you are required to take a look at what's happening with that. But if you could just kind of give us an idea, and I thought the parent recommendation or suggestion that perhaps they could get involved with that. I don't know if that's possible or not. You can let me know. I want to stay out of the classroom and out of your Superintendent's business, but at the same time, I would like to kind of get some feedback to the parents as to how we can make this a little bit better for our students, and if this is something that you are required to do throughout the system. And even though one of the parents mentioned that it only involves six students, I'm thinking that it perhaps involve more students throughout the district, and we have to think about the district. So, if you could just kind of give us a summary of that in just a few minutes, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, each year, as I shared at the parent meeting, each year, we are required by the contract, the teacher contract, to do it by a certain time. We're not required, like, the contract doesn't dictate to us the actual process, but the contract, we do have to meet the AEA contract deadline. And so, what I shared was, I'm used to doing this at the October 1st count in most school districts, most states, but here, we do it after the first three weeks of school. And so, we look at what we call balancing. We call it the three-week shuffle. And so, what we look at is, we look at the entire district, and we look at all schools when we look at the entire district. So, when enrollment is up in some schools, but down in other schools, we look at all of that to determine which particular schools might be impacted. Not every school was impacted, but, and talking about elementary schools, that is, because it depends on the, the numbers. One of the things that I have, even last year, I was very, very focused on making sure we kept our class sizes as, as low as I could put them. I actually wanted to start off the year with much lower class sizes than we could afford to start off with. So, I wanted to put like 21, maybe 22 in, in our K1, 2, even 3 classes. Wasn't able to do that, given where we are right now around our fiscal state. So, and in 3, 4, 5, we would be looking at 24 to 26 in those classrooms. Actually, we had some schools that were sitting at 27, 28 students. I think we may have had one that was, one grade level, and one of our schools was at 29. So, we were able to reduce those. What I also shared, yes, I do understand, as a former teacher myself, I've taught with 30 and 35 students in a class. I certainly don't want our teachers teaching and class size, with class, and having those class sizes. It is an unfortunate thing, but this is a normal thing that happens every year. By our contract, we can only move eight teachers across, but the school that is in question, over the last three years, and we went back to look at the actual data, but the enrollment is declining there each year. And so, one of the things that certainly doesn't make the process, make me feel good, but is what I have to do as a Superintendent, is I have to be fair and equitable across this district. I cannot focus on just one particular school and not focus on all of our schools. So, when this was done, we looked at this multiple times. The one thing that I am correcting for next year, which came out of that meeting, and I think it was a very good recommendation. Now, we'll make sure that the messaging of that is, is understood by parents at the very beginning of the school year because we don't want to confuse them, but to at least apprise them that this is something that happens within our school district. Every school district does it across the United States, and it happens at various times, but usually within the first month to two months of school. In any state, it's going, that you're going to have to do what we call three-week shuffle. I'm used to hearing it as balancing. And so, we then had to ensure that trying to keep the numbers down as, as low as I could possibly get them, we still have about two classrooms, I think, that have a sub. And so, unfortunately, we weren't able to staff all of the schools. And so, just being fair and equitable, and so, what I did say is that next year, we will communicate this information out prior to school. So, what we did this year is, we did a systemic PowerPoint that communicated information from the central office to our families because we don't actually have anything to do with their actual individualized school, back-to-school nights. So, this would be information that we would share early with our families to let them know that this is something that we actually do in Akron Public Schools. And then, when we get in that timeframe, we can send another letter out to our families to say, "Hey, we're getting closer to that time." We can't, what, what we can't do is, I can't tell you, because the numbers- We can't, what, what we can't do is I can't tell you, because the numbers, and to be honest with you, the numbers, this is a fluid process. Same process will happen next year, but guess what? It could be such that King ends up getting more teachers next year, which I was able to do last school year. I was able to give them extra teachers because we had, we had the abundance of that. We didn't have that this year. So I wasn't able to do what I did. But this had, the, the process is very fluid. It will change from year to year in terms of who is impacted. It's all based upon the enrollment in a particular school. And also we have to look at programming within schools as, as well.
Just Madam Chair, let me just follow up real quickly. So when you say the contract, you are working under the contract as Akron Public Schools?
Making sure we're meeting the deadline.
Deadlines, but the contract between Akron Public Schools and?
And the A E A.
The Akron Education Association. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. That was very informative. Do you have a question, Dr. Molnar?
Yes, Madam President, just a follow-up on something the superintendent said in his response. He said that there are still a couple of classrooms with substitutes. If you could please unpack that, does that, so do we have classrooms now with substitutes instead of?
Absolutely.
Classroom teachers?
Even before we did this, we had classrooms with substitutes. They are degreed subs, so they do have a degree. And the school, within the school, there are coaches that will help to work and support those, those substitutes. They're not people who don't have a degree, so they do have an actual degree. So they can teach and, you know, in those classrooms. And they'll be there long-term until a, a permanent teacher is found. And then you also have those that are day-by-day. If a teacher is out on a particular day, a substitute will go in. But there are, there are classrooms within our school that, yes, they have a substitute teacher.
Thank you. You have a follow-up?
Yes, are, are we looking to fill those roles with permanent teachers?
Absolutely. We are doing our due diligence around recruitment. But understanding that we, we, we did have a talent fair recently. We have others that are planned. But this is, again, not, not an uncommon thing. Unfortunately, we're speaking directly about Akron, but it does, this is happening across America where we have a shortage of teachers just in the field itself. So unfortunately, we don't have every single classroom in this district filled with a certified teacher. We would love nothing more, but that's our reality right now. And are we doing something about it? Absolutely. We're trying to recruit. We have a shortage of paraprofessionals as well. And that's another, you know, concern that we have. But again, we're trying to recruit for that as well. But indeed, we do have classrooms that have, it's not a whole lot, but we do have some that have a, a sub, a full, a long-term sub in there.
Thank you. Any other members?
Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you. If, if, if I can ask another one, were we able to bring back all of the teachers we riffed?
Yes, yes, tho, yes, those that wanted to return, yes, all of those teachers were returned. The la, is it either, I think it's this meeting or the last one, that we're returning one last teacher that was, we weren't able to reach, but we, I think it's this meeting, but we were able to, he finally did respond. And so he is going to be coming back. So, but yes, we've exhausted that list.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I just want to make a comment. What the superintendent is saying is true. I've been on the board all these years, and this, this has happened to all schools, this, as he says, across the country. I've talked to my colleagues for a number of years across the United States, not just in Ohio, but across the United States. And they go through the same thing, especially with teachers too. We've always had some substitute teachers where we started some classes each year because it's been tough getting teachers, certified teachers to come to work in our district. So this is, this is normal and we, it's not something, as a superintendent says, we like, but it's, it's just a reality of sometimes we have to do that until we can get some. And if you go and ask any school principal or superintendent across the country, if you go up to Cleveland, they'll tell you the same thing, they're having the same problem. So I just want to let everyone know that it's not just now, it's been going on for a long time. Thank you.
I would also just like to acknowledge our Human Capital Department. I don't want to start getting into names because I will miss someone's name. And I don't want to do that. But I really want to thank them for the robust work that was done in, in trying to get certified subs because they do have to get a license through the state. And so a lot of action happened over the summer, even as we got right into the beginning of the school year, trying to make sure that we got someone who we feel comfortable, it may not be a certified teacher, but they do have a degree in front of our scholars so that we could open the doors of the school year. But we, we are going to be doing more extensive work around recruitment, trying to recruit teachers from across the U S. When you do that, you have to worry about certification. And can they get a temporary Ohio license so that they can teach here for an extended period of time until they're actually certified? But I do want to thank the Human Capital Department. And I know outside I wasn't going to call names, but Mr. Foster Julian, am I correct? Yes. He really worked, and they all did, but he handles our subs. Can you just stand so people know who you are, please? I know you're embarrassed, but I just want people to know who you are. Thank you so much. He really did an extraordinary, thank you, an extraordinary job. I know you didn't think I knew that, but I do. At, at trying to get subs and lining them up for the first day of school. So it is unfortunate. It is not something that I don't think any school district is proud of, but it is, it is our reality in education. We just don't have a lot of people going into education. And so that's why we need to do more at Bookto in our education pathway to try and grow more of our kids to become interested. And so I, that's one of the things that I'm going to be working on with the new president at Akron, University of Akron, on things that we can do in collaboration to try and grow more of our kids to go into education and, and so that we can get them to come back. We did a lot with our student teaching, teachers, trying to get them last year to stay with us after they complete their student teaching. So there's a lot that the public does not see, that goes on behind the scenes. But people are diligently working to try and ensure that we get teachers. But some of our schools, unfortunately, they don't have a certified teacher. But they do have a certified sub who has a degree.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Vice President Jackson?
Thank you, Madam President. Very quickly, in regards to King and this three-week shuffle, I was, I'm just curious. I understand when you stated about the contract and that you had a certain time that it had to be handled, right? Is it possible that it could be done before the school year starts? Or do you have to wait to see? Because I'm just thinking about routines in three weeks. Teachers are, you know, getting students in routines, the students are becoming. If the forecast would say, okay, we're going to be light on teachers. So because of that, before we have the students come into a specific homeroom class, get into routine with this teacher, we can already have the shuffle?
That is a good question, Ms. Jackson. And so let me answer your question, but let me back up. In the spring, we do projections, which is the, the, the leading part of what we call the three-week shuffle or balancing. That has to be done in the spring. So we're working between February and probably March, April, working on, 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 on projections. And projections are just what they are. We think based on, and this is any school district in America, we think based on what we currently have sitting in seats, that these kids are going to return next year. And so we will staff that school based on projections. But we actually don't know who's going to show up on the first day of school until they show up. We have some, some students who don't show up until after Labor Day. We have some students who show up after the first couple of days of school. If a student, for example, comes to school three or four days in a row and doesn't come back, we still have to keep that kid on, in the numbers that we are counting because he, he or she may return. But after we do what we call balancing or the three-week shuffle, we then will have to withdraw that student because more than likely, they're gone. Either they went to a different school, which more than likely is probably not the case because we'd be able to catch that in our system. They're usually gone, they usually have left the system itself. And so it would make sense to be able to open the doors and say, we know that every classroom is going to have X number of students in it. And so we're going to give, I'll just use King for example, but we're going to give King this many teachers. Well, what happens is, we gave King, this is an example, this is not the reality. But let's say we gave King four third-grade teachers or four first-grade teachers. Well, what happens is not enough students showed up to constitute them keeping those teachers. And so we then have to move those teachers. Or, in some cases, in some schools, we projected for 20, 22 kids per class. And let's say we got two, two classes, right, 44 kids. But we ended up with 22 more students in that particular grade level than what we anticipated. There is no way for us to know that they were coming, they moved in over the summer. We get enrollments sometimes the day before school starts or the, the, when I say the day before school, I mean like whatever the business day is before school starts. And then we have to figure out, okay, we, we can, we already know on the first day, like when we have to do balancing, that, that's, that's, that might be a red flag for us. We don't always know though, honestly. Sometimes we can look at it and see, yeah, they, if we, but we don't know if the numbers are going to stay the same. See, I could say on the first day, hey, they're going to need three, three teachers in third grade or whatever school. And by the time we get ready to do the balancing or the three-week shuffle, they could have, 20 could have withdrawn or 10 could have withdrawn or five could have withdrawn. And so it is a numbers, I hate to use the phrase game, but it is a, just, it's part of the process. So we don't know. But what I did say next year that we will do, because I think that that is something that would be helpful to our families to understand, we can provide this information during open house. And then the week before, we can come and, we can send another correspondence out to say, we're getting closer to that time of balancing or three-week shuffle, just reminding all of our families. Because some would say, yeah, but you know in the second week. I really don't know until that we get to the end of the process because what happens is, last week, you didn't need a third-grade teacher or a second-grade teacher, but this week, you do. So now I know I've got to move a teacher over.
Thank you, Superintendent, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. Additionally, about the teacher preparation programs, and we know that Bookto offers that, and we are told often, children don't want to go into education. You know, they don't want to become teachers. And so I think, you know, what you see, you can be. And when excellence looks different and you have excellent teachers that is inspiring learning, encouraged, and those teachers are being properly highlighted and put before people, then what you see is what you can be. And I think that if we can change the narrative on how we position teachers and dream team of teachers, right? Where the teachers who are doing exceptionally well, teachers that are getting gains, we have them in buildings, teachers that are doing such creative things. I think about when I first got on the board and went to Sam Salem, the projects that were happening in the classroom. Anyway, I saw that to say, if we highlight these great teachers, empower these teachers before the student body, before the community, I think it would change the narrative and the lens towards teaching and to where the teaching profession is just as respected and paid for like it's respected, like physicians and attorneys. It, it's something where people want to be teachers because teachers touch every profession. And it's, it's a noble profession. It's a, a profession of character and integrity when those who get the excellence mark, right? And so then I want to also piggyback, because Member Haw, you said a couple of meetings ago, you were talking about the Nepalese and the Burmese students up in your cluster in North Hill. And you were saying, hey, how cool would that be if they got with English-speaking students? And they kind of did a trade of sorts? Do you recall that statement, like you were talking about? Why, unless I made this up in my head because you were talking. But where, it's like peer teaching, right? And so they're teaching each other the language and like getting familiar in that way. I think about that when we talk about educating and tutoring programs, teachers looking over things, where students feel empowered to help their classmates because they can see their natural giftedness. This is the, that innovative piece about education and the things that we can do to kind of be game changers in that way, that if we put students with students and encourage that and highlight those things in, in a very real way, as far as from the community level and within the school systems, that we may see a higher interest. So I just kind of wanted to talk about that because I thought that that was good. But just to like spark that passion, because a lot of these students, they're teaching each other how to make wigs, how to sew dresses, how to, you know, get engaged in different things. So I don't know, but that's just sad when you hear that, when we're all the fruits of great teachers, those of us who go into education, like we can reflect back. I was thinking this morning about Ms. Hamilton at Garfield, my history teacher. And I was thinking about Ms. Donatelli, my science teacher. You know, I've been on the school for 20 years, but things that I connect because of what they did in the classroom, so.
So we are already, we, Dr. Nguyen, Lawi Nguyen, who is, who's over our E S O department, our E L L department, they are doing sort of that right now. She'll be coming to present to the board pretty soon, just to share with the board around our shortage there. It is a federal unfounded mandate that has to be done. And it's, it's difficult to get teachers. We have had a huge influx of, of E S O scholars coming into our district. That's a great problem to have, but we weren't aware that we would need as much this year because it happened over the summer. And so, which is a good problem to have, but we're trying to find the staff to accommodate. Exceptional education, special education is another area that we have some equal challenges around, around scheduling because again, we need more special educators. So this is not something, honestly, that is abnormal to Akron. It is something that, no matter where I've worked over the years, it has always been an issue because education is a, is a profession where we're lacking teachers and, and staff.
And, and lastly, if someone can please follow up with me, because I keep saying, our congressional district, it may be a year ago now, sent out, if you, I don't think you weren't, you were not here, I'm sure, an email that was talking about funds available to help assist with teacher preparation. And I just wondered, did we utilize that? Where are we at? Did anyone tap into that? We don't have to address it now, but I want to say it again on the mic because I've been asking this, and then we say teachers, and I look at the budget, and it was a great email. And I asked, I'm saying it's a great email because it was full of information and resources. And as Mr. Alexander stated, a congressional district that was trying to help us in the area of education. And I remember thinking, this is so cool. How did we really leverage and utilize this resource that was being offered to help us recruit and train teachers? And offering to give funds to our congressional districts to be able to do that? I'm wondering, how did we utilize that or if we utilize it? And just to make sure if we didn't, that we don't miss opportunities to maximize. You always talk about, we need to advertise, we need to get out there. And recruiting is going to be heavy with advertising, it's going to be a cost with that. And so I'm just curious, and I yield any other? And I yield any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Really good discussion. It kinda actually even sounds like nursing. We're facing really, you know, similar situations. And I just wanna say, and I think I said it at the convocation, we also have to be very mindful at the narrative that we put out there because if we talk about how horrible teaching is, and it's so bad, and it's so this and so that, you know, that is discouraging to a student to even consider that profession. And it is a noble profession. It is something that we should be proud of. And, you know, it is just undermining when we say otherwise. So, we can't be surprised when we have these challenges with staffing if we're not talking it up like we should. So, we have really amazing teachers doing great work. And so, I know Superintendent, you've been highlighting and showcasing those people. That's one of the initiatives you've brought forward that I do appreciate as well. So, thank you. That was informative discussion. Next, we will have our treasurer's report. Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Now, it's the exciting part, right? Everyone's pumped now. We get to go to the money part. It's exciting. I do wanna thank Angela Carter because Angela found out how little I know about technology as she tried to help me send information to you all. So, I hope you got it. So, you have a little precursor to both sections that I'll be covering. I wanna just address, you know, what are appropriations? There's a lot of words out there, and acronyms and everything else associated with public education. But an appropriations is simply the budget. That's what, that's what it is. So, Ohio Revised Code 5705.38 is what drives appropriations for public schools in the state of Ohio. If you recall, in our June board meeting, you approved the temporary appropriations. Now, temporary appropriations were just three months of funding because without your, you appropriating the funds, we can't spend any money. So, it has to be approved by the board. So, in June, you approved those appropriations. Then statute requires us to come back before October 1st and do the permanent appropriations. And the permanent appropriations will reflect essentially the budget for the entire year. So, this acts as really your control mechanism as a board because we, you can see in each funding category, dollars are allocated for those particular areas that's based on what we know have been past expenditures and what we know that is coming. What is difficult, of course, is to predict everything that will come. You know, Dr. Robinson mentioned it earlier in his report about the changes we saw in student enrollment and some of the needs of those students that came in in the summer, which we didn't forecast for in June. So, these things impact, impact our budget, of course. So, we cannot exceed any budgetary area without the board's approval. So, that's your control or check, if you will, on the administration. The administration could come back and ask for a transfer. Maybe we're, we wanna take, this, this fund is lighter, and this one ended up being a more expensive fund for whatever reason, and transfer money. That still requires board approval. And if for some reason, there was something totally unforeseen that needed to exceed a fund area, the board would have to approve it. So, we will do our very best to, at minimum, stay at these projections. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to come under these projections. And then, these projections will be built into, which you'll see presentations in, at our finance committee meeting and then at a board meeting heading in October because, and then be asked to approve the five-year forecast in November. That's required statutorily to approve a five-year forecast by the end of November. So, we'll introduce it, we'll run it by you, we'll have opportunity for board input through the finance committee and through a board meeting before approval of the five-year forecast. But these numbers, of course, will drive our five-year forecast to some degree. Are there any questions about appropriations? Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Jackson?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Treasurer. Just a point of clarification because I wanna be clear that, so, board appropriations, these are for all the funds or just the funds in general? Funds where we have to get board approval?
These are all funds.
So, no matter what pocket it comes from? I'm asking this because, so, okay, I'll clear. Because I'm wondering, then, how could something be approved? Because first, I thought certain things, if it's certain monies that's designated for special needs or, you know, how certain, it's a pot of money for special ed or special needs, that since it's not at the general fund, then a member, you know, in central office could, like senior staff or something, could make a determination without board approval? So, you're saying that no contracts, nothing should be approved lest we voted on it?
What I'm saying is, let's say there's $3 million in the, in the facilities budget. So, of course, anything over $50,000 expenditure needs to come to the board. But let's say they're gonna spend $10,000 to do a roof repair. That would not come to the board.
Okay.
But if we exceeded $3 million and we ended up needing $3.5 million, that $500,000 additional dollars would require board approval for us to either eat further into our cash reserves or transfer it from another fund.
Okay, so, anything that's over the, a budget that has already been approved in those various categories?
That's correct.
Okay, so, if the budget has been approved, then you wouldn't need to come to the board, say if you were doing a contract for something to serve students, as long as it did not exceed the amount?
That's correct.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that. And then I have-
Let me just make one correction here in reference to what Dr. Thompson is saying. There is a threshold of which I'm to come to the board, but I always share that information with you guys anyway so that you know what we're doing and what we're spending and just in transparency.
Okay, thank you. And then, this is just like sidebar about money. I remember we were talking about, one other graduate, a year or so ago, about the graduation and student dues and things like that. And as I've been looking over the budget, I'm just curious, where does the excess money from year-to-year goes that may be left in the account from when students pays dues? Is that just absorbed in the general fund?
Eventually, it'll ride in that account for some period of time. And then, if it's not used, it'll move into general fund.
Okay, so, we have a line item for, is it a line item? Because I never seen it, like student dues or class dues for, it would be a line item for like 2024, 2020, and then it goes away? I'm just asking because I know we had conversations about when students can't afford this and that. And I'm just wondering, if we have this pot of money, why wouldn't it just remain as a line item for students? And then, we could see a running total where we could possibly offer grants or scholarships for those needs or for certain schools when they wanna have a graduation or what that cost might be? I just, I just, my mind went to that because I never, I was looking over this and I never knew what was the resolve in that, instead of just giving the money out to general funds?
Let me look into that and see that that's not a state auditor issue. And then, I'll get back to you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Question?
Mr. Alexander?
I'm sorry. Doesn't the, each school have their own fund? And then, if the funds are not used there, then it would come to the general fund, but the school can still keep those funds? Is that correct? That's what I thought would happen with those funds. For example, if Garfield had, let's say Garfield had kids there, the money was at Garfield. And so, all the money wasn't used for Garfield. It would stay there, but now they, if it doesn't after a certain time, I think then it would come to the general fund. But Garfield should have the opportunity to use that money and still there in their coffer?
So, for example, I think this is what you're saying or asking, Mr. Alexander, is, let's say the class of 2028 has an account that they've been putting money into. And they graduate, and there's still dollars left in that student account. We'll carry those for a little while because you do see classes come back periodically and say, "Hey, we graduated, but we wanna donate a bench with class of 2027 on it," or, you know, something. Those carry, but eventually, then they'll roll back into the general fund. But those are usually nominal amounts of money, very small amounts of money.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Other, other questions? Dr. Molnar?
Yes, you mentioned something about technology, and somebody sent something out, and I might have missed a memo. Is that what's uploaded? Or what was it that we were supposed to receive?
You were supposed to get a picture of me talking to you, like on a PowerPoint, basically. So, hopefully, you got that.
A PowerPoint?
Well, it's actually called a, what's it called? Alloom. Alloom, not to be confused with Zoom, but alloom.
And was that via email?
I'm gonna have to let, defer to Angela.
It's in your information that we send to all board members. So, it is there.
So, it was emailed?
It's a link that you click.
Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, I think some of, what we have here, some had zeros on them, and others have the numbers in it. So, we gotta make sure everybody has the right numbers because I don't think they have all the numbers. Everybody doesn't have them.
Yeah, well, that's a great point, Mr. Alexander. So, those numbers, you saw just a placeholder that had 0000 on everything. That's probably not how we could run our budget with no money. But what we were doing was holding off until the last possible minute, ensuring that we've captured every single possible expenditure. That was the, that was the goal. So, although, you know, we were down at the end on some, we had to make some changes on some security issues, both material and personnel. So, and then some, I believe they're called teacher activity accounts or teacher, what's it called? That stipend? Yeah, that supplemental. Activity supervisors, which are critical for safety and security very often. I mean, they do other things than that, but that's a critical piece they play. So, we didn't have those numbers until finalized today. We wanted appropriations to be as accurate as possible.
More my comment? I'm sorry.
You have a follow-up, Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, maybe a suggestion is, since some, some didn't get them and it came that way, maybe just before the meeting, if we can have that document so the staff or board members can get that and look at it. Because I have mine, the summer doesn't have hers. And so, we were just kinda sharing. But maybe even what you said you were doing, if you can get that just before the meeting so we can at least get a chance to look at it?
In the future, hopefully, you know, it's not our practice to put something on a board agenda, anything on a board agenda at the end, except for appropriations is the only thing I can think that we do do that historically. But in the future, I'll make sure I print it off and bring everybody a copy. It is uploaded in board docs now. It just depends on when you print it off your board docs.
I was just saying that because I think it's helpful for everybody to have because, let's say, some don't have it, some do have it. Mine does have it, and some others don't. And I just got mine before the meeting, actually.
That's why.
That would be good for everyone to get that. Thank you.
My apologies.
Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Treasurer, I just think that it is important that if we're gonna give a finance report, that we need to hear actual numbers. So, when we talk about the appropriations and fund names, and then we get zero on the appropriations, and we get the funds 1, 7, 8, and 19, that really doesn't give our community an idea about what it costs to run this system. And I think that's what I'm looking for in the treasurer's report. So, what is the projected annual budget for the '24, '25 school year?
Our appropriations are $401 million. And that's on, those are broken down by fund. It just may be, your print was before it was uploaded this afternoon. So, it is broken down dollar by dollar, fund by fund.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. So, I think that's the kinda thing that we need to know. Because as we go through this process and say to our community that it costs to educate and train our children, then they need to get an idea about this type of an enterprise. This is a major enterprise that we're dealing here with. And so, you're saying $401 million. And so, also, we need to see that broken down. So, how is that $401 million broken down by? I know we talked about at least 80% of that is personnel.
It is.
Yes, it's at least personnel. So, you know, so we can sit here and try to do that 80% of $401 million, but I'd kinda like the treasurer to do that for me. Just gotta tell me what that amount is. Because again, the more we can say that, the better it is for our community to understand that it costs to educate our children. So, when we start talking about the levy and how much it's gonna cost, they have a better idea and appreciation for why we're saying this is what it costs. And when we talk about taking care of our buildings and our schools, then they get a better idea, it costs this much. And when we talk about transportation and what part is we're paying for, what part is coming from someone, someplace else, and the different, the different line items, it just gives us a better idea. And I think the more that we can talk about this, the more the community can appreciate that Akron is a big deal. We're talking about 20,000 children that we're trying to educate. You know, we're talking about a personnel that's larger than the city of Akron, that's larger than the University of Akron. You know, this is a major enterprise. You know, we talk about the kinda things, you know, this 20,000 is larger than some of our communities, say, Canal Fulton. It's larger than the population of Canal Fulton. So, our community needs to get a better idea about what we're talking about when we talk about educating our children. We all want to think about, oh, it's just our little nice community, and so, we're gonna go to this school, we're gonna see this school, and this school. But this is a major business that we have to run here. And the money points to that because you know where our values are, our money goes. And what the state requires that we do, our money goes. And how well we take care of our children, the money is dictating that. And so, when you talk about, we can't move, we can't have the teachers all in this school because we don't have the students because we reimburse by the number of students that we have. And so, it also goes to vouchers and what's happening with vouchers and how much money is coming out of the system because of vouchers. And because of that, then we have to accommodate that. And then, we have to accommodate parents that's not necessarily coming into the school, their children, and get them to school with transportation. So, that's why I keep asking about the report. And so, I would like to hear the raw numbers that we're dealing with. So, when you say $401 million, I mean, some people-
And that's just your general operating, and your overall budget's $573 million.
So, that's a half a billion dollars. That is a half a billion dollars that we're talking about. And we need to, and that's a lot of money. But how often do our citizens get to hear that? But we're dealing with over half a billion dollars to run this school system. So, that's why I keep talking about it. That's what I think we need to do more of. I can appreciate not getting us the numbers, but this is our budget, you know? We had to have a temporary budget because the legislators had not approved the final budget. Now that they have, we do need to know what our final budget is and what we're expected to work within our means. And then, to know it's still not enough money to do what we need to do.
Right. And those are all really good points. I would, you know, so next, I'm gonna move into the monthly report, which'll get more into numbers. the monthly report, which will get more into numbers. And then where we really dive into percentages, et cetera, et cetera, and real dollars that were, are more forecasted with more information is when we do our five-year forecast, which will be coming up. So you're gonna get a lot of numbers thrown at you over the next couple of months.
Wonderful.
And I know that you like that, so it'll be great.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question. When we're talking about a threshold and what dollar amounts have to come to the board for approval, is it 50,000 plus or is it 15,000 and more? Like, when doing a contract, how much can you approve without coming to the board?
Statute is 50,000, and then we have policy that brings that down. It's 15,000 in policy. Is it 20, move up to 25? 25,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But again, Ms. Hall, I always share that information with the board anyway, even though by policy, we don't have to bring it, but I still bring it, I still share that information so that you do know what is being spent and what it's for.
Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate all the comments from all of my colleagues here, especially Member Sykes, and we need to know the numbers. This is a lot of money. This is very important. I take our fiduciary responsibility very personally, right? I wanna do, I wanna do a good job here. I'm here to do a good job. I care about how we're doing as a district. I have, in the loom that you sent, was it just a picture of the resolution that's in 62, or was there any other information? And also, generally, if someone could follow up with me after the meeting and let me know how I can get this information, I would really appreciate it because I would like to come to meetings prepared. Thank you.
Dr. Molnar, the information was sent, and so in the information that we send to you guys weekly, it's in that information.
Okay, so I checked my Friday notes, and if I'm finding it in the wrong place, I would just like someone to follow up with me and help me find it because wherever it's being sent, I just spent most of our conversation looking for it. I personally have not been able to find it. If someone could help me, I'd appreciate that.
Are there any other questions? So actually, item 6.2 is a resolution to approve these appropriations for fiscal year '25. That's the next item on the agenda. Is there a motion for that, to approve the fiscal year '25 appropriations?
So moved.
Spooed by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Alexander. We've had discussion, but we officially can have it now if there's any discussion. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, President Autry. If I could just get an updated report, because mine says zero. So I'm thinking, oh, you're just telling us what funds they're going into. Like, this is what I do at work, where, you know, we have funds and orgs and account numbers. And so as I'm looking, I'm thinking, oh, we're just putting things in funds. Thank you. So that's what I was looking at until I saw Bruce's report had a whole bunch of numbers, and I'm like, oh. So thank you for that, Dr. Robinson.
And it is my, it is my understanding that it is in your packets now.
Yes, I'm looking at the resolution here. This is the full.
And it's on there?
Yes.
Yes, I see the resolution. I just, if you took time to prepare a presentation, that's what I never-
We'll get offline and fix that.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions around this resolution? Sena, roll call please, Dr. Thompson?
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you. Next is item 6.3 is the financial report for August of '24. Dr. Thompson?
Do you need this back? Okay.
So, you know, I think like most things, it's a story. You know, we're telling a story. And when we give these monthly reports, that's what it is. It's a story about our finances and numbers. And this is the second chapter of 12 chapters. So it's 17% view of our year. So keep that in mind. And the reason I say that is, let's look at page three. The first box is to look at current year-to-date revenue collections, and it indicates a $1.3 million favorably compared to the forecast. So this first page, it goes to the forecast, month to month. Forecast, month to month. So, but what is skewed on this in terms of revenue, last year, we received our tax dispersment in August. This year, we didn't receive our tax dispersment until September. So this number would actually have $9 million more in revenue than what we are showing. So it skews the data. Now, that could even itself out over the course of, and will even itself out to some degree over the course of collections throughout the year. You'll see here, current year-to-date expenditures, again, comparing what we forecasted and what we see is a $9 million unfavorable comparison. That is also because of timing issues in large part. So current monthly cash flows estimate, including actual data through August, indicate that the June 30, '25 cash balance would be $82,753,000 less than the five-year forecast. I believe that will even itself out, and I'll explain that as to why I believe that in a little bit. And then staying on page three in that large box, it's showing an operating deficit of $24 million. We're not gonna have an operating deficit, I'm confident, of $24 million. Again, it's a timing issue. We have $9 million in revenue. That's not reflected on this. But what we do know, we do know, we are in deficit spending. We know that current expenses exceed revenue. That's not unusual. School districts boom, or do what's called boom and buff cycles. You pass a levy, and when you pass a levy, that dollar amount stays frozen in perpetuity. Why? You guys remember why? What freezes that, our revenue forever and ever? Thank you. House Bill 920. House Bill 920, to remind you all, is what freezes revenue. So school districts are forced to pass more money than they need. It stays flat until you move into deficit spending. And I don't care how frugal you are, you will move into deficit spending. You will. You can't avoid it. If you made $20 an hour today, what would it be like to make $20 an hour 15 years from now?
Not good.
Not good. You think it's tough now? If your salary stayed frozen, your income stayed frozen for 10 years, I don't care how frugal you are, unless you live in a tent, you're in trouble. Well, that's exactly what happens to school districts. And why? Because of House Bill 920. Remember, what is House Bill 920? 1976. Unfortunately, the more, when I started in this profession, I could say that, and there were tons of people in the room who knew what I was talking about. Now, there's, a lot of you have no idea. But 1976 inflation rate was at 20%. And the legislature at that time passed House Bill 920 that froze levy collections. And why? Because while the economy was falling apart, public schools were raking in the cash. Because as inflation goes up, what's that due to your home value on paper? Drives it up. So their people's taxes were growing exponentially, schools were flushed with cash, and that's how they solved the problem. But like so many solutions to problems, there are unforeseen consequences of those solutions. And that solution is, it has put public education and public schools on the ballot with regularity, and it's that way across the entire state of Ohio. The funding system has been held unconstitutional four times, and it is still unresolved. So school districts, on average in the state of Ohio, are every four and a half years, they're back on the ballot. Every four and a half years is the average in Ohio. We've gone 12 years. We've stretched that, and maybe to our own demise, perhaps. But that is why we are on the ballot. So that $24 million, I think it's going to be a negative number, but I believe it'll be more like 14 or 15 million, which is what we projected. Okay, so now we're comparing August to August. Again, it's very skewed data, as you can see on local tax reimbursements. You can see we're, what is that, a little over $9 million down, which is the number that I referenced earlier. And so that's showing the actual revenue for the month down $9 million because we didn't get our tax receipts. We get the tax receipt, that's not there. And this is completely a timing issue. We'll reconcile that next month. So going on to page five, as that compares to the forecast, you can see that that revenue is at $1.3 million over forecast, but it's actually more than that. So that's really good news. And how could it be more? We underestimated what we would earn on our investments, which is your very last page. I'll get to that in a minute. We're, right now, still averaging almost a million dollars a year on, a million dollars a month on our investments, almost. So that money is then being filtered back into our, into our general fund and helping inflate our revenue. Now, is that going to stay that way forever? Of course not. Of course not. Interest rates are coming down, good for a home buyer, bad for us. But that is simply, just, we're very fortunate enough to have some cash reserves and then invest it pretty wisely. Moving on to page six, this is, again, August to August, actual expenditures, all skewed, all skewed, all timing issues. But there were some other issues, or excuse me, this is expenditures. There are some other issues on this page that I wanna point out because it's showing, we're showing that $9 million variance. But there were other things that came in, in bills that came in in August. So for a financial month, it was a bad month. So coming in in August, we're utility property service, which is liability insurance that we have to carry, and that was a payment of $1.5 million that didn't come in until October last year, but came in in September, or came in in August this year. We knew about some of it. There was the push on our textbooks and some of our adoptions. We knew that was coming, but it still shows a negative variance. And then we added the COPS interest, which is the first year we've introduced that, paying back our certificates of participation, which is the funding for the Kenmore Project. So that, those all coming together, all at once, when we get a few more months in, I think you'll see that stabilize and level itself out, just like I don't think every month we're gonna be $9 million over in revenue either. That's going to level itself out. Remember, we're at 17% of our, of our total year completed to date. So again, I'm not showing concerns at this point. If I did, I would certainly inform you of that. We most definitely have to watch our spending. There's no question about that. The entire administration knows that, and everyone is behind in that endeavor. We have to be very fiscally conservative as we move forward, but that is our intent. But there are some things that you simply must do because it's the right thing to do for our students. For example, we had to hire some more teachers in ELL areas, special education areas, simply because, otherwise, we'd be out of compliance. So there are, those things occur. Oh, thank you so much for doing that. So that's where we are. Are there any questions as it relates to our monthly forecast? Again, pulling lots of data right now, compiling that data, and then we'll sit down and start working through our five-year forecast.
Thank you. So if we do this properly, we proceed to the resolution where we can have a discussion. So it's item 6.4, the resolution approving this August '24 financial report. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Hall. Is there a discussion?
Member Sykes.
I'm sorry, Member Sykes. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the question that was posited, could those, what you're reading from, be shared on, do you have it to where it can be shared on the screen, so where we can see this, whatever you're reading from, when you're referencing page three, for those who don't have the printed copy, and also for the public?
I can, I will, I do that at monthly financial meetings, but I can start doing it here as well, if that's helpful.
Yeah, because I know we've been here before in board meetings to where there's been presentations, and we've seen the numbers. And so I just, just for transparency, I was just wondering why it wasn't up today.
I'll do that in the future. It's a good suggestion.
Member Hall?
I was gonna say, that was my concern too, because you're saying page three. I'm a paper person, and me having a computer doesn't work well for me. So, you know, we printed out the agenda, and I noticed you're the only one with the printed copy, and four of us are sitting here like, what's going on? So if you have a presentation, like she said, could you print it out for us to follow through our notes?
I can print it out, and I'll put it on a view from now on, moving forward.
Thank you. Any other? Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you for this information. Also, Dr. Thompson, just so I can clarify that I am understanding this report clearly. We are currently $9 million over because there were unexpected costs based on what was appropriated, but we are, but we, were those items budgeted for previous months? Will our appropriated amount for the previous months balance out? Are we gonna have reduced appropriations in October? Or as Member Jackson mentioned, is this part of what we need to approve each time?
No, no. At this point, what this is telling us is that what this, this report on face value says, if each month were to continue to come in, as it has come in for two months, we would spend $9 million more than we projected, and we would have $1.3 million more in revenue than we projected. So an overall additional negative or unfavorable impact on the five, on the final balance of $7.7 million. That's what it says, which I understand your question. But there were, the reason it came in so skewed is that many of the cyclical bills, like liability insurance, et cetera, et cetera, came in early, and then our revenue didn't, came in late. So it, I believe, at this point, it's going to even itself out. But we certainly have to monitor both of these categories very closely, and that's why it's important to share this with the board and the community each month. You know, if we, if we saw a $9 million variance on expenditures and it was May, I'd be, I'd be concerned. But we don't. So we know we're in deficit spending, that we know. But this is on, this would be on top of deficit spending if it were to remain a negative number, and this would be on top of our revenue if it remains a positive number. So while next month, the green box will look really good, but again, I don't want to mislead anybody and think we have all this revenue because we don't. It's just gonna, then we'll go for several months where we receive no tax receipts, so the money levels off.
Thank you. You have a follow-up, Dr. Molnar?
Yes, sorry. Something I was gonna say before, and I forgot. I've been to a lot of ward meetings lately and the community members, and also I think one of our community members spoke about the levy earlier, about wanting information like this on our district website. Also, I know we talked about having it displayed here, but community members want to know how we're doing financially and all of these things. So I wanted to make sure I said that also into the microphone, that I've heard all of the community members say that they want to see this on the website, and I'm saying that here now. And then to confirm then, we are over now, but the next month, what we're appropriating for the next month will be less.
Well, I wouldn't use the word appropriating.
Okay, sorry.
We only do that once, and that budget's set. What I think you will- What I think you will, will see as, what I think you'll see over the course of the next few months is that number come down. That's what I believe will happen. If it doesn't come down, then we know that we're going to have to make, we're going to have to, if we don't want it to stay that way, we'd have to make reductions. You know, that's what we'd have to do. So I don't anticipate, though, that that's happening because of the fact that I know four large bills came in earlier than they had in the years before. So this software program says to itself, aha, your expenditures are up this much this month, I'm going to calculate that over the next 12 months. Bang, you get a big deficit number that isn't really reflective of what I think's going to happen. Does that make sense?
Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Quick question, Dr. Thompson, two questions, actually. One, you say, you know, bills come in and you don't expect them to come in, but aren't these bills that consistently come every year, like insurance and all these type of bills? So we already should know that these bills are going to come, regardless if they come in January or February, they're still going to come, and they're still going to charge us for January. So when you said that, like, they come unexpectedly or late, I'm kind of confused on, but we still know they're coming, right?
We know they're coming, yes, yes. Like, we know they're coming. You would find that appropriated in our budget. But this software program is going to assume that, let's say you had $10,000 a month in bills at home for one month, and you had a software program that was trying to help you budget, and it just automatically assumed that every month was going to be $10,000, then it'd be $120,000 budget, right? But it was an off-month, your months usually are $4,500 a month, just some bills came in early.
So do you look at the program also? I mean, I know it's a program, and it's a computer.
Yeah.
And they make mistakes, you know? So is there someone that goes over that and say, oh, these numbers don't look right? So do we then go in and modify that? Or do we just assume that the computer is pushing off the correct information?
We review the numbers, make sure we understand them. And then I don't have the ability to manipulate that software, but we have a vendor who manipulates the soft. We report it in, they go back and pull the data and make modifications if there's something wrong. But...
I know, that's why I was asking, when you're saying bills come in late. So I guess it could be another conversation. It's just kind of throwing me off by, you know, us not knowing, not realizing, then the computer does this, and then we catch it later. I don't know, it just, it just seems a little off. But the second question is, so when Dr. Molinar asked about the $9 million, and you said eventually it will, you know, kind of work itself out.
I am hopeful.
But when I asked at the last meeting about the contract negotiation that we did, what was that, two, three years ago? Twenty, I'm sorry, I can't even get the numbers right, 23 or 28 million? You said we were paying that forever. So how will the $9 million work itself out, but the 28 million won't? Or are we going to be paying this $9 million forever along with the contract negotiations that we?
No, this $9 million just says that we're spending more than we thought back in May. If we continued to spend this amount of money every month over the next, over the rest of the fiscal year, we would have a deficit of $9 million as it relates to what we projected. A pay raise, which, pay raise for, the entire pay raise was $21 million after the third year. That's in, that's built into the four-year, that's built into the forecast, and it never goes away. So a pay raise, unless you negotiate a give-back, which I don't think I've ever seen in my career, then that, that 21 million stays there forever.
Okay, I was just, all the numbers are thrown out, and I'm just trying to make sense of all of it, so thank you.
And if you ever, anybody ever wants to sit down, we can sit down and just really confuse each other to death. So be more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's not a question, but a comment. It's so, it's very clear that board members need to have more information about what's happening with the budget. And maybe we do have to just start with the basics. So I think that we should refer more of this to committee, so that we have the opportunity to really discuss this and go over it and take the time and understand what's happening in the budget. Because it's just, it is our fiduciary responsibility to know this and to understand this. And the committee is the place where we need to do this. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Are there any other questions, discussion? Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, sorry, one last question. So the textbook, the unsur, sorry, the surprising textbook fee, is that because of the books that we're paying back? And that's why it's one fee? Or are there, is that coming down later in another budget?
These are textbook adoptions, so they're curricular adoptions. So there was a science adoption correct, Dr. Kaver, and then there was a less, less expensive one just recently as well.
Fine arts.
Fine arts, thank you, Dr. Robinson. So one of the, the one adoption we knew was coming, fine arts. Well, we knew they were all coming, but we were, we had budgeted, appropriated for the science one to be in the year, the previous fiscal year. But it didn't, it didn't manifest itself, which is okay because that just gave more money in the general fund, you know, more money at the end of the year. So we didn't lose any money because of it, but the way it pays out on paper looks different. But it didn't cost us any more money or any less money. It was just paid out of a different fiscal year. Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I know this stuff's crazy, it's hard to explain.
Madam Chair, a point of clarification. Remember, Sykes referred it back to committee? And so, and then no action was taken after that. It started, continued the discussion, but she referred it to committee. Oh, I'm sorry, because she referred it to committee, so I'm confused why, and then like, are we agreeing for it to get sent back to committee, and then we'll cease the discussion, and we will move on? Because it's being referred back to committee. I know it's not a typical motion that we get, but that's what she, did I misunderstand that?
Well, I actually did not, Madam Chair, Madam Vice President, I actually did not put it in a motion. It was just a comment that these are, this is why I keep saying we should look at more things in the committee, and I just bring to the committees that, you know, we, we actually canceled the finance committee this month. And as a member of the committee, I was kind of surprised by that because this is some, this is, we could have discussed this in the committee. Yeah.
This wasn't prepared, this information wasn't uploaded before our committee meeting. So that's why this wasn't on the agenda.
Thank you, but it does not have to be uploaded in order for us to discuss it. I'm sure you had the numbers.
No.
You didn't have the numbers?
I didn't have access to the number until this gets uploaded into the system.
So you're saying this was not loaded into the system throughout the state of Ohio? What system was this not loaded into?
No, it, it's by school district.
Right.
So it's a, it's a software program called Forecast Five.
Yes, 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 I'm familiar.
So that, our data wasn't uploaded and processed by Monday.
Okay.
So that's why that couldn't be on the agenda. And there was something else on the agenda, but we decided not to breach that.
So my point is, if we're going to cancel the finance committee as a member of the chair, and of course, our chair is now leaving, that I would like to know that ahead of time and not just cancel the finance committee. Because there's always something we can discuss in the finance committee.
That's what scares me.
There's always something we can discuss in the finance committee. So, and, and, you know, it's just getting used to this. It's just a memory, just getting used to discussing it. It's clearly something that this board needs to do. We need to get used to discussing the budget. And so I would just say that canceling the finance committee just does not make me comfortable. And I just wish that we had not, but however, this is your last meeting.
And that would make you the chair, Ms. Sykes.
Yeah, I didn't cancel it.
Ms. Sykes, you will be the chair now.
And he did not cancel it. You did not cancel it. Okay, let's make this very clear. This is our committee. This is not the administration committee's. So please do not cancel the finance committee. Thank you, Madam Chair. If I were to be the chair from now on, all right.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other questions or discussions on the financial report for August 24? Seena, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
I don't even know where we are.
So it's been moved and seconded, and we were having discussion.
Okay.
Resolution 6.4.
People have rattled. Mr. Perry, yes. Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. And next, we will have the president's report. I just wanted to remind my colleagues that on Saturday, October 5th, is our next board retreat, and it will be held at the same location. I can't recall the address right now, but you, it should be on your calendar at the chamber. 388 South Main. So I'm looking forward to that. And also, so as we previously discussed and acknowledged earlier, we do have a board vacancy that we need to manage. And so for those who need the policy of the Ohio Revised Code that is appropriate for that, it is Ohio Revised Code 3313.11. But essentially, what it says is that it is our duty to replace this vacancy within 10 to 30 days. The actual process is not spelled out, so it's up to each individual board. So you might have seen other boards do various things. I've had a lot of questions about it, but it's actually what the board determines it wants to do, as long as it falls within that 10 to 30 days. So based on that, we did have this situation just this last year. And so what the board did was entertain a letter of interest and resume to the general public who's interested in that. And I would propose that we follow that process still because it's, it's set up still for us to do that. There's a timeframe of about a week or so in which we accept those applications at an email, and then it'll be provided to us as a board to review. And then we would have a special meeting, or at least an executive session, in which we would review those applications and determine who we would like to interview. And then there would be a second meeting to do the actual interviews, and we would select or appoint someone at that time. And so I wanted to open it up for a discussion or questions around that process. But again, it's really up to the board on how they go about the process, as long as it's done within 10 to 30 days.
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Alexander.
The other option is too, I just want to make sure everybody's clear, we can do it that way, where we take applications, or we could just appoint somebody, which is a shorter period of time. If it's someone that we want to bring to the table and say, here's maybe one or two people that we want to allow to maybe come on the board, we can appoint them that way. It could be done that you could take the person if we wanted to, who had the next amount of votes in the election, we can appoint that way. So we have a number of options. It's up to us how we want to do it as a group. So I think we put all the options out there, and if we come up with whatever option we want, then that's the option we will use.
Right, that is true. So we could appoint someone, and it would require this board to agree on that someone. So that is certainly an option as well. And it could cut down on the process. We could still entertain the applications because we don't know who's still available or interested from the previous election.
Ms. Autry, my mother would like to be on the board. Is that a conflict of interest?
I'm sure she's having a challenging time managing you.
She's 82. Oh, that was funny.
This jokes, this jokes. Ms. Hall?
So that was the best joke you've ever told.
Sounds good.
Are we discussing this right now, as to what we would like to do, and then we're going to vote on that?
Well, it's my suggestion that we follow the process that's already laid out, which would mean that the notice would go out as soon as tomorrow if we agree to accept those applications. And then I think I did send a email communication out about when we would have that first meeting. We could do it at our retreat, because that falls within the timeline, or we can do it at that following Monday executive session. Yes, Dr. Molinar?
Madam President, I guess it wasn't a motion, but I will second your recommendation. I think the last process went perfectly.
Oh, my gosh.
So I, is there any other questions or discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So of course, I wasn't a part of it, but I think I kind of remember something happening around this. So you, so we get the applications in, and then we just interview those individuals? And what about, are we notifying the community, everyone that applied for the position? Are we just, I believe, last time you only shared those individuals that were, that were...
We put a public notice out, and we put an ad out, and I believe it ran for like a week. And we're saying it now.
But did you share everyone that had actually applied for the position? I don't think you did that before.
I think we only, we put in the paper those who we were going to interview. And then, no, I think it may have been three or four, whatever it may be, then we interviewed them, then we chose from that, that pool.
Okay, well, Madam Chair, members of the board, I would say that it is important that the public know everyone that submit their name and resume to be considered, whether this board interviewed them or not, so that they would know this is a, this is a public elected position, and we just happened, because of the time, and have that responsibility to do it on behalf of the public. But I think the public would like to know everyone that applied for the position, whether they are in the top three or top five, or whatever you did before. So that would be one of my main points, is that we need to let the public know everyone that applied for the position, because then the public do have a right to know how we came to our conclusion, and whether or not, you know, they have, they can decide whether or not they thought we came up with a good decision or not. But if they don't see all of the individuals that applied for the position, then the public cannot make that determination.
I think that's fair. Any other comments, questions? And so then we do have like 48 hours to kind of review. So it's going to require us to do even more reading than we normally do, so that we're prepared to select. But I think that's doable, to put those names, publish those names of who's, who's interested, so. So what I'd also like to ask is, is it the will of this board to do those selections at the retreat executive session or at the following Monday? I think both of those fit within the guidelines or timeframes.
Just a point of clarification, where are we at? Did you, did you make a motion, was it seconded? And now, what are we doing right now? Because are we, I don't know, have we decided? Because Alexander just gave us other options. Molinar's made a statement, I'm just trying to...
So it sounds like Member Molinar seconded my recommendation.
She wants to repeat it, and then you second that we...
So the recommendation that I mentioned was that we conduct, solicit applications and a cover letter, and that this board meet and select who we would like to interview, followed by another meeting.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. I would just make the amendment, add an amendment that we would disperse the name of all of the individuals that actually applied for the position.
And that we would disperse the names of who applies. And so that would be my motion.
Second.
And it's been seconded by Dr. Molinar. Is there any more discussion? Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. So far as dates confirming, you threw out a couple of dates. So are we stating that tomorrow, the 24th of September, we will make it live, people can apply, to send a resume and...
A cover letter.
A cover letter, on the 24th. And then if we're saying giving them a week, that would take it to October 1st, would be the deadline, correct? And then that deadline on October 1st, we would then discuss it at the October 5th retreat. And then would we vote on the 14th at our next meeting?
So we could set a deadline for the applications for a week, which would take us to the 1st, if that's what we choose. And then, because I know we need at least 48 hours for us to review it, and if we want to have it by our retreat, or for that following Monday, that would be the other question. and if we want to have it by our retreat or for that following Monday, that would be the other question.
We have committee meetings, just to go back to our conversation. We have committee meetings on the 7th. So if we can talk about it during our retreat, I think that would be my ideal. I think would work best versus having extra meetings and then we also have our committee meetings too that day.
And I think for some reason, maybe it's a holiday, I think the actual board meeting is on the 7th.
Since the 14th. That's not what the calendar says, but we have to look back. Dr. Robinson, can you confirm that?
Yeah, the board meet, the board meeting would be on the 7th and the 21st of October. And I think that's due to a holiday.
Sorry, I didn't realize my colors. Yes, you're right.
No.
So 14th is the retreat?
The retreat is on the 5th.
The 5th, okay.
And the board meeting would be on the 7th.
Okay. So then on the 21st, then we would come back and vote on this person?
When are you going to interview?
Well, we would need to have a second, a special meeting to actually interview because the 21st, that meeting would need to be the one in which we appoint the person. Because the 23rd of October would be our deadline.
Madam President, I'm sorry, another point of clarification. Do we need to first do a motion to approve the date that, like the interview, the live interview date and then decide on the meeting dates? Does it have to be, I don't know.
Well, I think what's on the floor is the process. So what's on the floor now is the actual process. It's been moved, it's been seconded. We've discussed with the point of publishing all applicants.
So Madam Chair, I think we need to know when Member Perry official date.
He told me effective at the end of this meeting.
He told you, but I mean, we need to know that as a board and as a community.
When this meeting ends in about seven minutes.
So we need, so we need that in official record that that's his, because then as I understand it, and that's when the clock start ticking. So we need to know that officially, when is his, his date? Because I think it says, it says maybe like 10 days, no, at least 10 days.
10 to 30 days.
At least 10 days, no more than 30 days from his.
Right.
Day. So, so your effective date is today.
Yes, in about six minutes.
And we do have.
Are we going to get that in record someplace? How are we going to get that? How is that in the minutes? Your, your, your official date, your official date and time of leaving, I mean.
Could you state that for the record, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, would you please say that for the record?
Official date is today, September 23rd in six minutes, 8 o'clock PM.
Thank you.
No, so my thing is, do we need a motion to accept his resignation? Yeah, okay.
So we have an open motion on the floor though about the process. And I don't want to waste that because I think we're kind of on the same page, at least with that.
So I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Perry's resignation.
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, I thought you said we had to do that first before we do. Hey, you said, we're looking at four minutes now. Okay, so. Listen, what's on the table? Just explain it and let's vote.
On the floor right now is the process that we're going to follow, which would be to entertain the applications and cover letter starting tomorrow for a week and that we select who we're going to interview during our board retreat on the 5th and publishing all folks who.
Apply.
Want to come join us.
Apply. So move.
I second.
It's already been moved and seconded.
It was, it was moved by Madam President, seconded by Dr. Molinar. This is a discussion.
But you got to.
Is there any, with the amendment?
Okay.
Is there any, any other discussion on the process? Seeing none, Dr. Thompson? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero with one odd abstention.
Thank you. So now we will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of.
I'll make a motion to accept.
It's been moved by Dr. Molinar. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by a member of Sykes to accept this resignation of Dr., of Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion? Again, Mr. Perry, thank you for your service and congratulations on your opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much for saying that.
Roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Abstain, no, yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Abstain.
Abstain. You can leave now.
Okay.
Motion carries six zero with one abstention.
Thank you so much. So, so we've agreed on the process, at least for the first part. We will need to schedule a second special meeting to actually do the interviews. And so we probably need to do that during the week of the 14th. So we can send your availability to Elise. I don't know that we need to do that right now unless we're prepared to do that, but we still have some time for that part. But we have enough to get started here. So look for that email or just respond to Elise with a week of the 14th when you'd be available to actually do the interviews. And I think that's it for my President's report. Next, we will move on to committee reports. Legal, contract and board policy. Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. The legal committee met September 16th. We had a first read on policy 8660, transportation by private vehicle. For community members who have been following us, this has nothing to do with any of the transportation conversations we've been having at our regular meetings. Transportation by private vehicles for non-routine trips, like maybe a parent might take someone somewhere. We have a second reading of that policy anticipated at our October 7th meeting. So our next meeting and then probably the third and final reading, I'm guessing, then would be scheduled for the 21st with our new person. So a new policy on your first day, whoever you are. Our next meeting for legal committee is October 28th. Discussion on House Bill 214, Senate Bill 29, independent contractors and recess. That is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Molinar. Any questions for that committee? Thank you. And so we've already heard that finance committee was canceled. And I just wanted to state publicly that Member Sykes will be the chair at this time moving forward. And I would just strongly suggest sending your questions to her as she works with our treasurer and superintendent to create the agendas for the finance committee. Finance is not fun and it's not easy, but send your questions so that they can be addressed in committee. It's ongoing. I've been here five years and I'm still, I know about House Bill 920.
You nailed it.
But, so send your questions. And next instructional policy, student achievement.
Your mic is on.
We did not meet in our next meeting. It's Tuesday? Summer, you have it? Is.
No, I don't. When I was looking at the calendar.
Because of that board meeting being moved to the Saturday.
It says the 14th, so that's why. But that's a holiday, so we don't have an updated date.
Yeah, so. But I said that last time, it's not until November. But I said that last meeting was corrected. I thought. Who has it? It's Tamiya?
It's October 14th.
October 14th.
Okay.
Thank you. Next is equity committee.
Well, why would we have a board meeting? If it's indigenous people that. Okay, that's to be determined. So watch on our website for that because if we cancel the board meeting, I don't know how we have an instructional policy meeting. Because that would be the normal board meeting. The second and the last, the second Monday of every month.
The second and fourth.
Second and the last Monday. So I think November 11. I'm going to tell, November 11, if it needs to be updated, we will for instructional policy.
Thank you.
So we'll, in the follow-up, if it's, something needs to be changed, we'll update it on the site. But the board meeting should be on the 14th and it's not because of. Yeah, but they moved it because of the holiday on the 14th. You see? Yeah, so, all right, no problem. Yeah, thank you. So November 11, that'll be the next instructional policy meeting.
Thank you. So when I was doing the research for the board vacancy is when I discovered that, oh, we don't meet on the 14th because of the holiday. So. I believe the committee can meet if it chooses to. The committees will. So the staff won't be here. Vice President Jackson?
Yes, I have another edit to the instructional policy. So as it was just brought to my attention, November 11 is Veterans Day.
That's definitely a holiday.
Yes, and so. Yes, sir. No respect, that's all right. So it'll be November the 13th. Okay, I can do that because I meet with y'all anyway. November 13th. Thank you. That's my final message. I approve it.
And equity committee, Mr. Alexander?
Oh, Lord. I'm not sure when we're going to meet. Now, we will be meeting on the 15th, October 15th. First of all, no report. And we will be, we will be meeting on the 15th at 5:30.
Thank you. Member Hall?
So you're, right, we're not, we haven't met. But I would just like to bring this to our attention, our equity committee and people that report out. I would just like to make a recommendation for that meeting. I would like to hear an update on the referee process for our students that was brought to one of the equity meetings and we haven't heard about it since then. It was regarding our students becoming referees. And I wanted to know the process and where that stands. I think we talked about that back in May and we haven't heard any update about that since then. Also, the press box at Bucktoe and no running water. Yeah, we are in football season, I understand that. But we spoke about this, I'm thinking in June, and was told that there would be some RFPs coming out. We're in September, almost October and still haven't heard anything about that either. And last thing is, we also discussed, I think in May, regarding these fields and a lot of the high schools don't have their own stadiums, so they play at Ellet. I know I had asked a question about who gets the money for the concessions. And as I attended a game last week, I was told that it was split in half between Ellet and the school was East. But I was told during one of our meetings that the home school gets it if they're not playing another APS school, which they were not playing APS school. So for us to have, for that school to have to split the concessions with Ellet, how are the schools that don't have stadiums being able to get money to do things for their school as other schools, right? So I think we're doing a disservice to our kids when only certain schools have fields and others don't, and then they don't even get the proceeds. As well as who gets the proceeds at the door? Is it three schools since they didn't play an APS school? So was it East, Hoben and Ellet? Or who gets that money? So I would like an update because some information I was given just doesn't seem correct to what I was told at the facility. So those three things I would like, some updated information, please, at our equity meeting.
That would be a great meeting, October 15th.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Okay, moving on. Item 9.1, approval of the regular meeting minutes from Monday, September 9th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I, I move to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Just real quick, at our last meeting, I know we had a lot of conversation regarding transportation for a student to go to Columbus. And when the question was asked about where is the funds coming out of, it was told general funds, but I'm learning that it's not general funds. So I guess kind of confused on where the funding would come from for that student to be able to be transported back and forth from Columbus to Akron or vice versa.
It will be general fund. The initial way that the student was being transported, that would be able to come out of IDA funds. And that was sort of the reason that it was done that way, which we were able to work with our ESC, which is something that we, school districts belong to, your local ESCs. But when we had to move it to an, to a independent contractor to do the transporting, you can't pay for that out of special ed funds, so it has to go in your general fund.
Just a follow-up. So with something like that, it was only $14,000. Was that, well, that's what it said on our last.
Yeah, it's up to $14,000.
Up to $14,000, right. So would that had needed to come to the board since it was under $15,000? And it wasn't general fund?
Well, given the circumstance, that's why we brought it to the board. Because it, it was being approved through, for the company to use that company, which is not a company that we, like, we didn't just generally just go out and get that particular company. That's the one through the ESC that generally would support the trans, the transportation for that student. So that's why we, we had to use that particular one. But in this case here, we would be using an ICO to do that and that would come out of the general fund. But the other way, it would have come out of IDA, our special ed funds.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Member Sykes.
Actually, I asked the question and the question wasn't what fund is that coming out of? My question was, who's paying for that? Because this board had not approved the expenditure. So that was my question, who's paying for that?
No, the reason I was asking because it was, it was like general fund and then I found out it was another fund. So I was just like confused, like who's paying for it? Is it, so now it's coming out of general fund, but before I guess it wasn't, but that wasn't clear. So now that I have clarity, that's why I was like, you know, what fund was it coming out of from the start? So, yeah.
I understand what you're saying, but my point is that the board had not approved the expenditure. And so my question was, so who's paying for that?
Right.
So that would go to the treasurer. You know, who has signed that contract with that particular company? How did we decide that we were paying that since the board had not approved it? That was my question.
Right.
But now if you're saying you figured it out, I'm not going to revisit it. I've just got to let it go. But just for the record, my question was, and who's paying for that? Since we had not approved it, the expenditure.
Thank you. So what's on the floor is approval of the previous meeting minutes. Is there any other discussion around that?
Yes, sorry.
Dr. Molinar?
Sorry, yes, thank you. So I just looked back at the old agenda and so, because I was trying to remember this confusion. And it did say on 27/9 that this was, that that $14,000 was going to come from the general fund. So does that affect our minutes since it did say at our last meeting? And I think the reason we voted it down was because it said it was coming from the general fund. Does that affect our minutes?
No. So are you asked for correction to the previous meeting minutes to reflect that initially it would have been coming from our IDA? it would have been coming from our IDEA funds? Is that your...
No, initially it said general fund, so if the intention was for it to come from IDEA, I guess, I guess, I don't know, what is, what does that mean? Because it said, if you look at the old agenda, 27-9, the old agenda 27-9 says general fund on it. So I guess, I still don't understand where IDEA comes in, because this item said general fund all along.
So that would have been an error in there, so if it did say that, then it should have said IDEA funds, not general fund. But because it is, we're using an ICO to do that, then it would be general fund and not special ed funds.
So are you asking for correction to the meeting minutes?
I'm saying, do we need, I guess, the, do we even need a correction? Because since it said general fund to begin with, then it stayed in the general fund. Do we need it? I don't know.
Madam President, we, we don't need an amendment because it's already in there. So if we were just making the motion on the same thing you want to vote on last week, or last board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Any other discussion around approval of the meeting minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Ms. Autry?
Same, was absent.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 with two extensions.
Thank you. Next is our personnel recommendations, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend the approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories 10 through 21.1, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve our personnel recommendations?
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Jackson, is there any discussion? Mr. Perry?
Just wanted to point out yet again, item 10.3 reinstatement from reduction in force, we were talking about it earlier, one more teacher was brought back, and I think we've agreed now that that...
That's it.
Exhausts the list, so...
Yes, sir.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other? Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. I have three things, I'll try to make them quick because it is 8:17. First, item 11.7, I see the, sorry, so, reclassification for a video production artist. I know we've been making a lot of videos this year, and I'm just generally interested, wondering if maybe in a committee sometime, we could have a, a presentation on the progress of the videos, how many have we made, how many clicks are we getting, you know, just a general information, may, maybe in committee or somewhere else, on, on this investment that we're making. If this is someone that is, you know, gonna spend a lot of time making a lot of videos, I'd like to know how the videos are going. Item 12.1, I've been getting emails all week about our special units and special programs, and so I kind of, I was going through here, and I want to highlight especially a lot of these programs at Bridges that I did not know that we had at Bridges. So I see, you know, newspaper art advisor, esports, theater production, drama coaches, and so a lot, I encourage anyone who wants some light reading to see a lot of the programs that we have to support our whole children, you know, the whole child for all of our students. And then the third item that I wanted to bring up for discussion is 21.1, so in 21.1, I see we have another reduction in force here for 21.1, and I guess I was kind of confused because we already had a reduction in force, and so now we're having a separate reduction in force, and so just generally, as the board has a responsibility to maintain long-term oversight, including staffing changes with the future success and stability of the district in mind, I'm just kind of wondering if in the future, or how we can have all of this done at once, or why this would have been done separately, as its own.
So your first question, Dr. Molnar, Ryan Rittenhouse is a current employee, but the extensive amount of work that he is having to do, and he would be supervising anyone that comes in under him that is supporting him, quite frankly, he's underpaid, to be very honest with you, for the extensive amount of work that he does each and every day. And I'm just glad that he's still hanging in here with us and continuing because he is dedicated and loyal to this district, but the type of work that he's doing now is very different from what he was doing, so that's why you see a reclassification on there, on that. Even some of the stuff that I came to the board about and asked for, we're not even going to do because we're trying to make sure that fiscally, but this district, long before I came here, did not have a real, what most districts this size locally around us have, they have what we call a comms department. So they have somebody who does crisis writing, reporting, all of those types of things. We do not have that in Akron Public Schools, and that's something that I've been, I shared with the board when I interviewed, I've been sort of pushing since I've been here, the stuff that you're seeing, videos and all those things, that's Ryan and doing, doing all of that, and trying to keep up with the extensive load that he has to do. And now that we may not be able to bring in the people that initially I would have, I would have tried to bring in positions, and to be honest, I was still trying to piecemeal, as professional as I can get it, the, the people that I need, because technically, to do what needs to be done in a district of this magnitude, we probably need to have about five or six, seven people. I was on a call with a district, one of our big eight districts just this past week, and just talking to them about how they navigate there, which isn't foreign to me, is what I'm used to, but just trying to figure out how we can do the same level of work and expectation, but we have to pay people. And number one, we are trying to budget and watch our budget, but all those videos and all the things that we've seen happening, and the, the work that we've seen around graphic design, all of that, I'm just trying to rob Peter to pay Paul, so to speak, to get the people that I need to get things done, because I don't have the resources right now to do what needs to be done. So that's why you see that. Your other question was about supplemental contracts, that's what you were talking about in 12.1?
I was celebrating them, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, and then you had...
21.1. 21.
Oh, 21.1, okay, that's, I'll let our executive director for Human Capital.
Thank you, members of the board. Just to respond to that, that was a, a position that was in the Communications Department that is being eliminated due to reorganization of the Communications Department, so that was the one position that was being eliminated. That was it.
So, so two things, one, thank you for your, please say, thank you for your explanation for the 11.7, but I just want to know, and I will repeat for the record, in a committee or somewhere, I'd like to know what videos we're making and who's watching them, just generally as a board member, we're paying for videos, I just want to know, what are we making and what clicks are we getting? Now, back to 21.1, in the resolution here, it says that the reduction in force is for financial reasons, so did we not know about these financial reasons when we made the other reduction in force, or I guess what has shifted since our last reduction in force?
Well, I mean, I think part of what we will continuously do is assess departments as we determine reorganization, and with some of the changes that are occurring in the Communications Department, there was an assessment made recently there about what positions are really necessary for that department. The role in that, that position of program analyst was not something that was being utilized there effectively, that has really fallen more in the IT department, and so the determination was made to eliminate that position there.
Last question probably, in, thank you, in our last board meeting, there was a proposal or an item to add a position to the Communication Department. We are now removing a position from the Communication Department for financial reasons. Is it safe as a board member to assume I will not be asked to approve any new positions or additional money for financial reasons?
No, I don't, I wouldn't say that. I think that part of a reorganizational restructuring process is to continuously assess a department to determine what positions are really necessary for that department. So there may be an addition added at some point, or possibly, I wouldn't say that, that because, but we also have to make determinations of what positions don't need to be within a department. So it is a determination of balancing what we really need to have for that department to run most effectively.
And to that point, I do want to thank Mark Williams, which we're gonna do something additional in terms of, he is retiring, so that position is gonna need to be filled, and yes, I will be bringing that job description back to the board, given the extensive changes that are being made to that particular job description, just so that we're able, I'm, I'm not asking the board to give me what our neighbors have, I'm just asking to get something so that we're able to do a little more than we're doing. Like, the public doesn't see, nor does the board see, these people running around, taking people out of their work every day, sitting around tables and doing articles and do, I mean, that, I didn't hire 15 people to be communications specialists, but they're all pitching in and helping out just as a team does, and so that was the purpose of that particular position that was brought to the board. As the CEO of the district, I am paying extensive care to what we're spending, and I am being frugal about certain things because I want to make sure that we're not overspending our, but we also need to spend in areas that are necessary and needed without us doing, adding a whole lot of positions, but there will be times that we will have to ask for something in order to be able to get certain things accomplished. So I, I will be bringing that position back, and because it'll have to replace him, so I don't, I won't need to have an additional position that will do that. I'm trying to rewrite the job description to where whomever comes in will be able to do all of those things, which to be honest, I'm saying good luck to myself if we can find somebody that do, that to do all of those things that I'm asking them to do with what is expected of them each and every day, so we will do our best in, in trying to find someone who's willing to work with us to do that.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion items around personnel recommendations? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson, thank you, Ms. Atkins.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry, and thank you, board members. I'm never gonna ask you for a lot, but to just get by as best we can, there will be times when I will come to you and ask you, I'm not gonna ask you for something of waste, it's what we need, and so I do appreciate you and thank you for working with me. I wish to recommend the approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 25. They are in proper format, and I move for their approval, please.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
ISO move.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Sykes, is there any discussion? Should be none for consent agenda. Roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Next is our business affairs recommendations, Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend the approval of business affairs recommendations presented in category 27, please.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Is there a motion to approve our business affairs recommendations?
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Perry, is there any discussion around our business affairs Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. The next item is 29.1, under unfinished, unfinished business, and there is a resolution for contracts with parents for transporting their children to and/or from school for the 2024-25 school year. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
I, ISO move.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Alexander, is there any discussion around this? Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Madam Chair, members of the board. So if you go to House Bill 110, and the information that we received, and if you tap on that, you actually don't go to House Bill 110, you get the Ohio Education Policy Institute newsletter that gives counter, an explanation as to what has happened throughout House Bill 110. You hear, you see where the governor's recommendations are, what the House recommendations are, and what the Senate recommendations are before we actually saw House Bill 110 pass. So, and as far as transportation for parents and their children, that's not mentioned even in this newsletter. What's mentioned as far as transportation is transportation funding for preschool, special education, and special education transportation are increased under the housing funding plan. That's the only statement about transportation and children. So my point is, is that I understand you trying to give us something to look at to verify what House Bill 110 says, but if we're going to do that, then we really do need to look at House Bill 110, or at least highlight the part of House Bill 110 that talks about parents for transporting their children. Now, I don't expect Mr. Miller, Mr. Folk, or Ms. Folk to know all of this as it relates to legislation and what you find when you go to House Bill 110. So this goes to a previous conversation that we had, and that I think that it would be helpful, and I would like to support having a staff attorney, because these are legal issues. When you go to House Bill 110, and how do you go to the House to find out what this legislation says and what it's actually saying, and how do you find the various information on House Bill 110 if you don't want to go to House Bill 110, because I'm pretty sure it's a pretty big piece of legislation, but we don't want to use the Ohio Education Policy Institute newsletter. And I think, Mr. Superintendent, that you mentioned that you were thinking about bringing in a staff attorney, I wholeheartedly support that, I've supported that since my first day on this board, that we need a staff attorney, I think the... need a staff attorney. I think the staff need a staff attorney, someone that they can talk to every day. And we have six attorneys under contract, six firms under contract, last time I counted. And perhaps if we have a House Attorney, we can see a reduction in what we're paying the contracts attorneys. But certainly, the staff and the board would have someone that we could talk to on a daily basis about how do we actually present this information. And this is just a perfect example. And I don't know if anybody else clicked on this, House Bill 110, to see that what actually came up with the Ohio Education Policy Institute Newsletter that just gave kind of overview of House Bill 110, and not even in the area that we voted on. So, I'm going to support this. But, I also would say, Mr. Superintendent, that a staff attorney would be of great benefit for this major enterprise, half a billion dollar enterprise, that we're looking at items on a daily basis. And I know that it would help many, many other staff around here and this board.
Thank you, Mrs. Sykes. I would agree. Thanks.
Thank you. And to your point, that is something that this board can entertain. We actually had an attorney that, we did not renew that contract. So, that is the will of this board. We can go through that process again, or I don't know if we're able to, you know, pull from our existing firms.
That, that would be something we would do in-house, in-house meaning in district. So, I did bring it, but it did not pass. So, it is something that we can bring back to the board again.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Hall?
Just for clarity.
Let me clarify. Thank you, Mrs. Sykes. I brought it to the board, and that from the discussion that was had is the reason why I didn't bring it to the board, because we got into the discussion around funding, which, what we will be doing is not going to be a whole new position. It would actually save us a little money in the district, but be able to do the things that, exactly to your point, that you're speaking about. And it is something that I, I'm going to try and do the best I can to support and make sure it gets to the board as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. Just for clarity, when looking over the information for parents to transport their children, it states a rate of 58386 with a maximum of 116772. Is that per year? Is that quarterly? Is that half a year? What does that look like for parents that are watching and are questioning it?
Thank you.
Good evening. This is 50% of the average cost per year of a regular ed student to be placed on a school bus. So, the $1,100, as you reflected, is the annual cost statewide, determined by ODEW, and then 50% is allocated. So, as an example, one child is the $583. The state gives us that information in May. It may be adjusted again in May of '25 prior to the payment that comes out for this year, which is usually in late June or early July. And then, of course, they will do the average again for the following year. So, it is actually dictated by ODEW's information.
Okay, thank you. So, for this school year, a parent will get 58386 per child?
Per child.
For the school year?
For the school year. That is correct. So, if you had one child, it would be one. If you had three children, they would each get the 58386.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Folk. I think we have another question for you, Mrs. Folk. Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. And I figured, since you're up here, I wanted to clarify. So, transportation for students is for students who live more than two miles away from their neighborhood school?
Yes, it's from their residence to the neighborhood school in which they enrolled at.
So, are there, and this is based off of a conversation I had with someone at a sports event recently, are there students that if they went to Akron Public Schools, they would not qualify for transportation, but they are getting a voucher for a private school? So, they are getting transportation and this, or this 58386 for in lieu of transportation?
That is very possible. If they enrolled in a private school, parochial charter school, they could still be given a voucher to go. And if the school, then they apply, because again, they apply, the parent requests us to take them, say, to private school A, and they are eligible, it is possible on top of the voucher, they could get additional transportation either in one of two ways, by an actual bus, or, you know, that is taking students to school, or they would qualify for consideration of payment in lieu, providing that the actual building itself, there's a 30-minute rule. The 30-minute rule comes in from the home school of the student based on their location. So, I'll give you an example. Say, the student lived in the Ennis School District. The 30-minute rule goes from the front door of Ennis, where students are dropped off by our buses, and goes to the actual location where they enrolled at, and then it's to the actual drop-off at that location. The actual official timing can only be done during the normal transport time during the school day in the morning. And if it is less than 30 minutes, they are eligible for transportation or payment in lieu, depending on the asset, which is PIL. If it is more than 30 minutes, it is not impractical to transport them. It's ineligible to transport them because it will not go beyond the 30 minutes. And that's another part of this transportation. And that log is actually an official timing that must occur, as I said, at that specific time, from the school of their attendance zone to the school of enrollment.
So, simply put, and for clarification to my board members, why I care about this, is anyone who knows me knows the best time to call me is at 2:00, because I sit in the car for a full-on hour every single day. And I was telling this to my neighbor, who is so close to me, I walked to their house. If they sent their children to Akron Public Schools the way I send my children to Akron Public Schools, they would not qualify for transportation. However, they get transportation to the school they use a voucher to every single day, and they will get payment in, so they used to have a bus, and now they will get payment in lieu. So, if I pulled my kids out of Akron Public Schools, I would probably have transportation to the schools. And that is something that concerns me as we are trying to encourage people to enroll into our district.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Member Sykes?
That concerns me too. And that is a law that we have to live under because of Ohio legislators that has stated that we have to provide transportation for those students.
But, we could provide transportation for our students. If we're providing transportation for their students. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
For yours. You're talking about for your children?
For my children and my neighbors' children if they went to Akron Public Schools. We have a lot of children, and I, as I sit in line at Akron Public Schools, that are not getting transportation.
Got it.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion around this resolution? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson?
Ms. Hall?
I abstain.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-1 with one abstention.
Thank you. And so, under new business, we have a item for curricular material fees for the 2024-25 school year. The resolution is there? Is there a motion?
I so move to approve.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson?
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you so much. And then, item 31.1, there is a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering the dismissal of a public employee or official of the school district. Is there a motion?
I so move.
It's been moved by Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries seven oh.
Thank you. We are in session, we are recessed at 8:42. Thank you. We are in session, we are recessed at 8:42.
Yeah, he saw me.
Ready? Thank you. We are back from executive session at 8:59 PM. And so we do have an item that requires action, 32.1. This is resolution number 24-139 for the termination of employment. Is there a motion to accept this resolution?
Saw move.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Jackson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson?
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Perry is absent. Okay. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much. Our next board meeting will be October the 7th. We will see you then. And we will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hall. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Dr. Thompson?
Dr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. We stand in adjournment at 9:01 PM. Thank you.